All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen, August 17th, 2021. Board of Selectmen's meeting. I am calling the meeting to order at 6:18. I will read the preamble pursuant to Senate Bill Number 2475, which was signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021. This meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be conducted both in person and remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Members of the public and our parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may do so in person. They may also watch or participate in the meeting remotely by finding the meeting at www.southbrowtown.com/remotemeetings. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at www.southbrowtown.com. In the event that despite our best efforts, the public is not able to access the proceedings in real time via those technological means, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I would just ask, I know we have the classroom. There's a lot going on here tonight. I would just ask that if we could keep the background noise to a level, a lower level, this computer that we're going to use to do the presentations for the Scholarship Committee will pick up, it's a microphone that will pick up all the background noise as well. So, that being said, I'm going to actually shift public comment down, and I'm going to do the Scholarship Committee recipients first, so we can take care of that. So, public comment will be next. So, that being said, I welcome the Scholarship Committee. I welcome all of the recipients. It's been a tough couple of years for all of you, and I commend you for keeping your studies up and doing everything and representing Southborough the absolute best that you could. We're also very proud of you, and we're very proud to be able to do this at a Board of Selectmen's meeting. I know with COVID, everything got kind of a little messed up over the last couple of years. So, again, I commend all of you, and what we're going to do is mute this one first. Mute this one. You can see me great. So, what we're going to do is we're going to call you up individually. I'm going to, myself and the other members of the board, if you can see me, that's okay, they can hear me, other members of the board, and we're going to just do a little presentation with the Scholarship Committee for you. We're going to take turns coming up, so all the members will come up. So, we're going to first start with Olivia Battles. So, just so those at home have a little bit of information about Olivia, she, while she was at Algonquin, she participated in Best Buddies, the Har- Haringer, and she knew that, and was a freshman orientation leader for the town and community work. She was the Assistant Clerk, Assistant, sorry, Administrative Assistant to the Town Clerk, a poll worker, a religious education teacher, a peer tutor, and she's going to be attending Holy Cross and all those now, so, very soon. So, Olivia, if you want to come up, and we'll have Isabel or whomever likes to come up from the Scholarship Committee as well. So, on behalf of the Scholarship Committee, here's a certificate. In honor of outstanding performance, we gladly present the Southborough Scholarship to Olivia Battles, awarded by the Southborough Scholarship Advisory Committee, and obviously as Board of Selectmen, I'm helping present that. So, this is for you, and Ms. Mills has a present for you as well. So, congratulations. Thank you for everything. And if Mom and Dad want to come and get your picture taken here? Absolutely. Welcome. We'll have the Scholarship Committee members, Alexandra, if you want to come up and stand in the picture. I don't know this, we know that you need me, but, no, 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 you guys are good. I get face time, that's good. So, if we could give Olivia a round of applause as well. Well-reserved, congratulations.
Actually, I won't have a trouble picking my voice up at all. But, next up is Erin. Desmond, you want to come up, Erin? And a little background information about Erin, another Algonquin grad. I've got four of them, none of them at home anymore, but it's great to see all Algonquin grads. Wild High School, participated in Best Buddies, varsity field hockey, varsity rugby, so you're not someone to be trifled with. Town community work included the Beaumont Nursing Home, and in the fall, heading out to Western Mass to Mount Hollyoke. Congratulations. This is on behalf of the town. Does Murphy's taking pictures?
Okay. It'll be there, and I'll get it. Okay. Sorry, Erin. One second, we try one more. This is why I use the phone. There we go.
I know, I haven't seen a camera in ages. Most importantly, this, you could put that down, but this, hold on.
And begin with your parents? Mom and Dad, come on up. Alexandra, you want to jump in these two? Absolutely.
Why don't you get the next few dogs?
Thank you. Congratulations. Amelia Habib. Great pleasure to present this to you. Amelia Algonquin, student again, tiny tom hawks, preschool teacher. She's worked as a teacher's assistant with the Next Generation Children's Center, and she's going to Westfield State University to study early childhood education. So, congratulations on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and Scholarship Committee. It's a great pleasure to present this award. Here's the most important, most tangible part. Congratulations.
Next up, Bennett Yi. Bennett, why don't you come on up? Congratulations. Also, Algonquin grad. Bennett is headed to Wash U in St. Louis in the fall. Have you visited out there? Oh, man. It is, I have, I have, and it's, you are, it's spectacular. You know, it's wonderful schools all around. It's a beautiful Midwestern school, so you're gonna, you're gonna have a great time. While at Algonquin, Bennett was a participant in Special Olympics volleyball, intern initiative, the Green Earth Club, and the full orchestra. Playing what instrument? Excellent. And on behalf of the town, Bennett, certificate of scholarship. Congratulations. And again, this is Murphy. She's getting the hang of that 1985. Congratulations. Have you been out to Wash U?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
And our last recipient actually couldn't be here today, so we're going to, I'll cheer for her, clap for her, and I don't have to do picture again, so that's a great thing for everybody. Grace, that's the, so there's Gretchen. Is Grace there? Oh, she's coming in now.
Is there her here?
There she is. And I'm muted?
Yeah, you are. I was trying to bring her up.
Let's go back to regular. It's fine. No, that's fine. Perfect. Awesome. Hi, Grace, how are you? Welcome.
Hello. Thanks for having me.
So, because you're not here, we're going to do this anyway, and everybody's here to see you get it. On behalf of the Scholarship Committee, first, let me just tell everybody some of the achievements, the wonderful achievements you've had, Willa Algonquin. You were, participated in the Special Olympics, National Honored Society, DECA, Global Goals, and you are attending the University of Maryland in nursing. So, congratulations for all of that. Thank you. And on behalf of the Scholarship Committee in the town, we present, in honor of outstanding performance, we gladly present the Carol Harris Scholarship to you. So, congratulations. There's the scholarship. Thank you very much. And actually, Alexandra Mills has the most important thing for you. And we'll get those to you and Grace and family. Thank you so much, and congratulations, and best luck on all your future endeavors. And, you know, nursing's a wonderful profession. So, thank you very much. And everybody, if we could just give her a round of applause. All right, Grace, thank you so much. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you. Sorry, let me just mute this, Isabel. All right, everybody. We're gonna, we're gonna take a pause for a minute, just so we can let everybody get out of the room. So, if everybody can hold on two seconds. Awesome. Great. Again, thank you, everybody, for your patience, and we are now going to get back on the agenda. And, is it Sheriff, did I take yours?
No.
Okay, perfect. We're going to go to public comment. If anyone has public comment, they're welcome to come right up. Welcome. I'll have you come right up to the chair here, and when you're ready, just say your name, your address, and you just hit the spacebar, and it should unmute you. You are? You are. So, those at home, while it's a live meeting, it's also a hybrid meeting as well. So, again, just name, address, and welcome.
Before I start, I have photos that I just wanted to, do I command permission to hand these out, just before I sit?
Just under, typically under public comment, the board doesn't respond, but you're welcome to.
I didn't want to.
You're totally fine. All right. I will note, Ms. Scott has given the board some photos. Thank you very much. Yeah, I wanted to do that before I sat down. My apologies, but thank you. So, good evening, Honorable Board and Chair. My name is Laura Scott, and I reside at 37 Presidential Drive, where I have lived for almost 25 years, over 30 years total in Southborough. I'm here tonight to make you aware of not only a grievance I have about a building permit that has been issued at 35 Presidential Drive, but also the process that the town, in particular the ZBA, has followed in handling my concern. Before I sat down, I handed out photos that you can follow along, that tell the story that I'm going to try to do very briefly. As you may be aware, on April 30th, I filed an appeal against a building permit issued at 35 Presidential Drive for a commercial-grade steel-framed sports barn containing a basketball court, locker rooms, guest locker rooms, bathrooms, lounge, and equipment room. The footprint is approximately 3,500 square feet and 35 feet tall, and it includes parking for seven cars in addition to an existing three-car garage. The structure appears as big and taller than the original two-story house of about 4,500 square feet on a very narrow lot, which is typical for this neighborhood, the narrow lot. This building, the sports barn, was originally intended to be an accessory building with a proposed height of 20 feet. This would have required a ZBA variance review. Instead, the owner and the builder had the sports barn attached to the garage to circumvent ZBA, and then designed to meet maximum allowable height of 35 feet. As a side note, basketball courts, indoor basketball courts manufacturers recommend 17 to 20 feet. However, whether an accessory building or an addition, this building permit should never have been issued on the basis of intended usage, as was explained by my attorney, Ginny Kramer, with Blatman, Babarowski, and Haverty, in a letter dated August 3rd to this board. This is not for customary residential usage. There is no other sports barn similar in nature to this one in the town of Southborough. The owners have children, have children at faith school and on the basketball team. I am concerned, given the size and scale, that this is more than just a casual space for friends and family. I'm especially concerned because we share a driveway. On July 21, after almost 90 days of delay, after the filing of my appeal and the building continuing to be built, my request was finally heard. I should note that the builder asked the Building Commissioner for advice as to whether they should continue to build. Normally, a builder would suspend work with an appeal that might significantly affect a project once an appeal has been filed. I find it strange that the builder continued to build. At the hearing, while almost all ZBA members were concerned that this building didn't feel right, it wasn't right, it was out of scale, they did not feel that they had the authority to question or second-guess the Building Commissioner, which frankly is exactly the ZBA's role. Not knowing what the other options they had, nor consulting with town council, they upheld the building permit. They didn't continue the meeting to seek counsel, they let the building move forward. This monster building continues and is now looming over my home, specifically my second-floor master bedroom, where there were trees, lots of trees. I'm facing a building taller than my own home. My lot is situated on the 10-foot lower grade, so it is a 45-foot building at my property. This is impacting my quality of life, and it's impacting the value of my property, not to mention the ongoing outrageous construction noise, excavating, rock drilling, that I and my neighbors have suffered for the last nine months during COVID, while we all have had to work from home. Any reasonable person would view this as an unreasonable and unacceptable, and my attorney and I believe illegal. Broader than my issue, which I am litigating, is that we have a ZBA that clearly needs better training and guidance. They fail to consult and fail to understand their roles and responsibilities. Even though they were provided a legal opinion from an extremely knowledgeable firm in this area prior to the meeting, they chose not to seek legal counsel. A terrible president has been set in the town of Southborough with this building and process. My ask is to direct town council to review this process that took place to issue this building permit, including the correspondence between the Building Commissioner and the builder, and the taped ZBA meeting of July 21, 2021. I've obtained copies of the emails between the Building Commissioner and the builder through a public document request, and I'm disturbed by the tone of them. Additionally, the email history is not complete. The Building Commissioner apparently did not use email while replying to the builder, and I'm not sure why. I'm asking that the Board of Selectmen issue a stop-work order on this project while this matter is reviewed by town council. I'd also like to ask that the Planning Board and Board of Health determine what review, if any, should be done by those groups. I really appreciate all your time, and I thank you for your attention, and that's all I have. Great. Well, I thank you for coming to the meeting. Just so you know, Mr. Purple did go downstairs and had the photo scanned and sent to the two members of the board that are not here, so, you know, that they'll be able to reference what you're talking about. And again, thank you for coming forward. Thank you for sharing your concerns with us. Very much appreciated. Thank you. Is there any other public comment going once? Do we have anything? Let's see. If any of the attendees wish to participate in their public comment, please just raise your hand. Okay. And I see no hands, so, thank you very much. So, I just want to, before we proceed with the board, just kind of take two seconds and talk about the process, I think, best to follow for this meeting. This is kind of a rarity for us to have members that are not present since we've gone. Whoops, I don't know what this is. I don't know. I'll ask it to remind me tomorrow. Sorry. You know, having two members, and I know, in order for the participants in the room to be able to hear our members, we need to make sure that we, as a board, are completely muted when one of them are speaking, because they're going to come through a speaker that's sitting here on the table, and there'll be a lot of backfeed if we don't. So, I think the easiest process is, you know, as all of the issues tonight come through, we'll go down the line, we'll call on everybody, we'll allow everybody to speak. If there's something additionally that somebody wants, Chelsea and Andrew, I'd ask that you raise your hand, you know, just so that we're not talking over each other. So, that being said, I think that takes care of that. So, next on the agenda is volunteer interviews for Youth Commission vacancy term 6/30/20. Mr. Joyner, I see that you're here, sir. Welcome. Come on up. I believe Ms. Bancroft was unavailable to attend tonight, so I will ask the board to wait till our September 8th meeting to a point, just so she has an opportunity to come as well. But again, you're always welcome. We've had you here before. You know, certainly welcome. Absolutely. Have a seat. Kind of following the same process we've used before, just tell us a little bit about yourself again. I know we were pretty impressed the last time you came, and, you know, just tell us why this position is something that is of interest to you. So, all you have to do is hit the spacebar. That should unmute you, and I am going to mute.
Okay. I see myself here. Well, it's interesting to, thank you for having me this evening. It's good to see you in person. Last time was all virtual. And I guess the, the best way to describe why I'm here tonight is that we have really good ambassadors and recruiters in this town. I joined the Community Preservation Committee, being invited to participate by Freddie Gillespie, who has been a participant for many years, and kind of walked me through what the process was and why it would be a good idea to participate. And similarly, Sarah Castle approached me and said, you know, we think you might be a good candidate for this, this position, this role. I think she was, she was, I think Chief Paulus may have recommended me as well for that. So, I think it's, again, it's a, it's a reflection in the town of people knowing that we, it's, it's important to encourage people to participate and reach out to folks like myself, who probably wouldn't have volunteered without someone's guidance. So, I appreciate that. And then we should describe what the, the Southborough Youth and Family Services does, and all of the objectives and all of the accomplishments. It aligned a lot with my own sort of background and personal views. I've worked in affordable housing for many years and have been exposed to a lot of the things that the Youth and Family Services tries to accomplish, and I think I would bring a perspective of that as well. Also, I am a person who grew up in a single-family household, raised by a mom working two jobs, grew up in the Bronx, New York, and I think, again, some of those experiences as a young person, I think I could relate and bring to the, this, this role and this position. So, I think, I think that would be a good kind of nexus. Also, recently joined the Big Brother, Big Sister, and I'm going to be participating this fall with the MAZI program, which is introducing high school students, or getting high school students a plan to get to college. And I think all of those things kind of, you know, circle together to, I think I could bring to the table with this, with this appointment. So, I'm very happy to be considered and glad to be here. Thanks for having me.
Great. Thank you. So, we're going to go to the board. We'll start with, as if they were all here, I guess. We'll, we'll go to Ms. Malinowski first, if you have any questions or comments.
Can you hear me? Okay. Welcome, Mr. Joyner. Thank you for applying for the Youth, Youth Commission vacancy. Can you describe what you're most excited, what you would be most excited about on this commission?
Sorry about that. Well, I, one of the things, as I mentioned, I think there'd be a really good nexus between what I'm trying to accomplish with the Big Brother, Big Sister organization, and what I think this organization, the Southborough Youth and Family Services, is trying to accomplish. I think, again, what, the, the nice thing about this organization is it's, it's youth and family. So, that's, they're distinct groups with distinct sort of goals and objectives, and I think my background in housing, where you are exposed quite a bit to not only finding programs and services for folks, but also helping people access resources. It's great that the town has a resource like that, and I'm, I'm excited to, to be considered for such a role, because I think that my background kind of aligns pretty well with that.
Chelsea, sorry, Chelsea, was there anything else? Okay. Mr. Haley.
All right. My system isn't working all that good, but I think it's picking up now. I'd say nice to see you again, but nice to see you in person this time. It really is. And thanks for, thanks for volunteering. You know, I really don't have any que, I mean, you, what you've described is a very nice fit for Youth and Family Services. I just, I, more curiosity, you know, you've, you've, you've been in for, what, about a year now with the?
Since November.
Since November. Maybe, can both of them be unmuted at the same time? We can't. Okay. All right. Let me, try to remember, because I can talk for a little bit. So, you've been doing that since November, and I remember when we talked to you back in October or November, one of the things you talked about was your background in housing and your interest in affordable housing. And while Youth and Family Services is, they really don't have a housing component, there really is, because it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a life considerations and services that they provide. And I'm just, you know, there, there seems to be a, a theme to your, to your interests and, you know, terrific involvement. I'm just curious, what, I guess it is, it is a question. What do you think from a Youth and Family Services combined with the CPC, from a housing standpoint, you can help the town with? Because, really, from some zoning issues and otherwise, you know, we, like a lot of other towns, are struggling with, on the one hand, it's, it's, it's great to talk about the, the ideal of bringing a, you know, a pretty affluent community like Southborough, bringing housing opportunities to perhaps the less affluent, and creating a more diverse housing supply, which creates a more diverse community. And I'm wondering, again, I see a theme in the things you're interested from the town perspective, and I'm just wondering your thoughts about that.
Well, it's a great question, and I'll answer it in sort of two ways. First, the initial interest that I have in participating with the Southborough Youth and Family Services is more practical than what you just described in terms of a broader goal of affordable housing. My background in affordable housing has exposed me to, I've been involved in property management and asset management. On the property management side, you're more involved in the day-to-day aspects of the operation of affordable housing, and in that context, there is a great deal of focus on resident services. Many of the programs that finance affordable housing have a component that, that encourage resident services, services to help people get access to jobs, get access to resume building, get access to other services that help them with their families. And I think, from a more practical perspective, it's just knowing how these organizations have operated. And I have to, have to say, seeing and, and being exposed to what I have been exposed to, that Southborough Youth and Family Services does, they do a really good job of that already. So, I think that's more of just kind of providing a little more context in terms of access to other folks who have, who've been doing that kind of work. So, it's more practical than So it's more practical than an objective of trying to encourage the development of affordable housing in the town, which I do believe is very important. I think that's important just in general. I've been, in my career, I've had the good fortune to have gone to DC to lobby for affordable housing and meet with representatives from the House and the Senate to encourage programs to develop affordable housing. But my participation here is not as much to encourage the development of affordable housing, it's more practical or targeted to what this organization is trying to accomplish. But I do believe what you described is important.
Great, thanks very much. And again, thanks for putting your head back in the ring a second time.
All right, we're going to go to Mr. Stivers next.
Thank you, and also thanks for volunteering again here. I think this is a great opportunity here in terms of Youth and Family Services, and this may be a little unfair, but I'm sure you haven't had huge exposure to what they do yet. On the other hand, are there things that you've seen so far that strike you as being opportunities for expanded focus or additional programmatic support kinds of things that you might be able to reinforce and encourage as a member of the Youth Commission?
Again, a really good question, and the first part of your comment was, I have not had as much exposure to it, so you're absolutely right, I have not yet, not having been yet welcomed to participate. So I didn't have the opportunity to really spend more time. I did have a great conversation with Sarah, and she talked about what the organization does. And we just talked more theoretically, so I haven't had the opportunity to form it into a plan of how I think I could specifically bring ideas to augment what they're already doing. But I can tell you that from what I heard, it's a very, for a town this size, the resources that that organization has and the reach and what they're trying to accomplish, it kind of is, in many ways, on par with what I've seen for much larger organizations, much larger settings. So it's impressive what they're working on in terms of mental health, in terms of substance abuse, in terms of what people have been dealing with during this past year or so during the pandemic and trying to help people through that. I think, again, there's a lot that this organization brings to the table. And probably would, as I'm more exposed to it, would probably find areas to try to help supplement, but.
Thank you. I understand, and again, as I said, probably a totally fair question. And I think you'll find that this organization is very important in a lot of ways that aren't too visible to people. I've always considered them to be an element of the public safety department, if you will, and because they are sort of in the front lines for a lot of issues that could escalate into significant public safety issues if not handled with care and skill, which they tend to do. So I think they'll find many opportunities there, should be a point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers, Mr. Dennington.
Good evening, Mr. Joyner, it's very nice to meet you and I appreciated what you said. So it sounds like all the other selectmen had a chance to meet you previously when you were appointed to the CPC. So I'm going to end by actually asking for some very basic information. How long have you lived in the town? And do you have kids in the school system here?
I've lived in Southborough for over 30 years, in two different houses. My kids are older. My oldest just is, she just got to Stanford yesterday. She's working on her PhD in counseling psychology, and she's doing an internship there. But my youngest daughter Caroline is in Brooklyn, New York. But both of them went through the school systems here all throughout their childhood, and they've actually wrote about it as well.
Are you also?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have Lauren Ritchie. Lauren, I don't know if you want to come on or unmute, and, oh, there you are. I'm going to mute, and you can unmute and speak if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Lauren Ritchie, and I'm the chair of the Youth Commission. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Joyner on the phone after he spoke with Sarah, and he had already, we had quite a long conversation. He had already done his homework and had, I believe he had watched the coffee talk episodes, if I remember, and he had also read through the strategic plan and had questions about that. So he's very well, one of the things we talked about was public outreach as far as part of the strategic plan for the Southborough Youth Commission. And I know I'm not really asking him questions right now, but at the time I asked him his availability for that type of work and for his interest in doing some public outreach to really get the message out that the Southborough Youth and Family Services is here for all town members and residents for a number of different programs. So I just wanted to say I had a great conversation with him, and he seemed like a very well-qualified volunteer.
Thank you, Lauren. I'm not quite sure who this question is for, but are we, because I've been impressed with Mr. Joyner before, and I'm more impressed with him, talking with him tonight. I've also cheated and looked at Ed at his Bancroft's information, and I'm quite impressed with that as well. Are we talking about one vacancy or two?
We are talking about one vacancy, that was why I asked at the beginning. And then, again, Lauren, I apologize, I should have brought you into that discussion, that I was going to ask the board to wait until September 8th to seat, just so we could have Ms. Bancroft come in as well. I should have asked your thoughts on that as well. So if you're in agreement with that, if you could just unmute, let me know.
I would be in agreement with that.
Okay, great, yeah, unfortunately, there's only one seat at this time. But I'm sure we have two really great, qualified people that might be interested. There's vacancies in town that we might need their help to fill as well, so. Yeah, and again, Mr. Joyner, thank you, as always. I've enjoyed the conversation with you. I was in the Big Brother, Big Sisters program myself many years ago, and I found it to be extremely rewarding. So I appreciate all that you do and all that you give back as well.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to say anything further? Okay, so Mr. Joyner, we'll make a decision at our meeting on the 8th. Lauren, I hope that you'll participate in that meeting as well. And again, thank you, thank you for coming tonight. I wish we could have done something different, but much appreciated.
I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much, Lauren, thank you so much for being here as well. All right, next on our agenda, Police Chief Paulus is going to come up. And Chief, if we just push those chairs forward, I'm going to mute, you can stand right there. I have, and with your request to appoint Luke, I'm going to screw this up, look, I totally apologize. Socorso, I did it, there we go. As probationary, police officer, effective August 19, 2021. So Chief, if you want to have both of you have a seat, you can say a few words. The board can take a vote, and we'll go on from there. So I'm going to mute.
My also, okay. So very happy to be here tonight, this is one of the great parts of the job. Very briefly, started out, we had one opening, so we had 27 applicants. And as you wind through the applications and you move forward, I always say, we're only looking for one, and find one good one. And we've been able to hit many home runs in my time here. So as the interviews and the background checks wound down, we came down to two candidates who we were looking at hiring. And then when it gets down to that level, we look to see who's going to be the best fit for the town and who's going to be the best fit for the department. And I want to say that Luke really stood out. He was impressive to both myself and the lieutenant. And after we left, we just looked at each other and we said, we found our one. And then we brought him in for an interview with Mark, who also confirmed what we were thinking. And very hopeful, it looks like that we're getting somebody who's got some experience, who's well-educated at Curry College and had a number of different steps coming up the law enforcement profession from TSA to Western New England, and then over to Framingham State. And from there, we did a very intensive background check. And also, we're looking for what's the best fit. So we're hopeful that we hit a home run, and just hope that you approve as well. And we're anxious to get him started on Thursday. I believe we already reserved some uniforms and his training officer, and we're anxious to get going. I know his family's here, and it's an exciting time, especially when you're pursuing that full-time, you know, police officer job. Sometimes it takes a little while, it took me a little while. And when you finally get there, it's a proud moment. So I hope you'll agree with me tonight.
Great. Okay. Great, thank you, thank you, Chief. And Luke, welcome, welcome to Southborough. Would you like to just take a few seconds and tell us a little bit about yourself? I see your proud family is here, and I'm sure they'd, just a spacebar, go right ahead.
Thank you, happy to be here. Yes, Chief said, I've taken a long road. I've been involved in law enforcement since 2014. Curry College graduated criminal justice, went out, spent the summer with Nantucket Police Department, spent some time with TSA, and then went the college route with their departments. But my ultimate goal has always been a small, local municipal town. And I live right down the road in Worcester, grew up in Foxborough, so I'm getting familiar with the Central Mass area, I've been impressed. So I'm looking forward to spending many years here and working to really be involved with the community. I've always been involved in sports. So that's something I could be into, the youth sports, community outreach type thing. Also, I grew up with a learning disability. It's something I could help, you know, the younger kids, different programs out there to help them. Because I lived it, continue to live it, and it's something that I deal with and could have great impact on some kids struggling.
Great, thank you. And I appreciate everything that you said in the learning disability part as well. Because you know what, you're a role model to kids that may struggle in a lot of different areas. And to see, for them to see you sit here today, Mom and Dad, you must be so proud. You know, we're very proud to have him here in front of us today. I commend you for that, and just follow your dreams. And again, you're a prime example of that. I'm going to go down the board here and see if anybody has any questions or comments. Mr. Haley.
Welcome, and congratulations for the nomination recommendation from Chief Paulus. And obviously, we have a biased view, we think you're coming to a terrific community. But it also seems like we've got a terrific candidate. My question was going to be, because on the information, it said you were in Worcester, and I was going to ask you about the transition from a city to a small town. But Foxborough's a little bit bigger than Southborough, a little bit farther south, but it's similar place. That's where you grew up?
Yes.
Oh, cool. So it's just a welcome on my part, you know, the materials are impressive. Congratulations to you, congratulations to your parents. And 2014 doesn't seem that long ago to me, by the way. A very nice presentation, welcome.
Also, I'll reinforce my welcome, delighted to have you here. It sounds like the chief has made a good pick here. And I think, as I said earlier to you, Southborough's a great place. I think we've got a great police department and fire department as well, public safety is a very strong function here. And I think you'll find that it's a great environment to work in. So welcome, we appreciate you volunteering to take this on.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers. Mr. Dennington.
I just wanted to welcome you as well, and I think I've actually met you before. If you'll recall, I think when I was visiting the police station to stop by and get a tour, you were in the, we were in the waiting room together, and you were wearing a suit. And so we were making some chit-chat, so it's good to meet you for the second time, albeit virtually, and I look forward to working with you. So welcome to Southborough.
Right, Andrew, you had me worried there for a second, it's where you met him. I didn't know if you got pulled over, or there was something more. I was waiting to hear the story, so I'm glad you cleared that up. Thank you, Ms. Malinowski.
Welcome, and thank you for that introduction. I appreciated everything you had to say. I have young kids who are getting into sports in school. So I love to hear when police officers want to get involved with the younger kids and provide that role model for them. So welcome to town, congratulations to you and your family.
Just one question, I should have asked it on the way through, near and dear to my heart, what sport?
Football, definitely, number one, basketball, lacrosse.
That's all done.
Two out of three, good job.
I think that being said, Mr. Haley, do we have a motion?
Yes, we do. I move to appoint Luke Socorso as probationary police officer for the town of Southborough, effective in two days, August 19, 2021.
Second, second.
We have to do roll call vote, Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Dennington. And Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Mom and Dad, I don't know if you guys want to come up and have a picture taken with the chief here? Well, we can pause for a second, most certainly. You know, have your family come up, let us come out and shake your hand as well. So we're going to go into recess for a minute and a half.
We're going to have another camera.
Great, thank you, welcome to our new officer again. At this point, we're going to have Chief Achilles and Chief Paulus will be back in in a second, an update on public safety communications. Chief, do you want to come up to the computer up here? And we'll put Chief Paulus there, and everybody can hear. And. Okay, so we're going to stay in recess then for another minute, thank you. All right, so now we, actually, where is the chief? He's there, we're all good. Okay, so again, welcome, Chief Achilles and Chief Paulus. So Chief Achilles is here to give us an update on public safety communications. I turn it over to you, sir.
And I will, because the emergency communication center's under the auspices of the police chief, I'll let him speak first.
So sure, you know, there's been a topic that's been around for longer than I've been here. So regional dispatch, in the last, I don't know, few years, it's ramped up with the state's putting more money into it. I'm not sure what the timeframe is, a year and a half, two years ago, we went to a meeting where many of the towns in Metro West started to discuss it. I believe it was Chief Morrow, Ma- I believe it was Chief Morrow, Mark and myself was in exploratory phase. It's recently surfaced again where they're pursuing it. They had a regional meeting a couple of weeks ago, just to say that they're moving plans forward and the state had set aside a decent amount of money. Interesting meeting. Information came from it. And I know that they're pursuing that information with most of the towns right here in Metro West. So I know a proposal was made that you have to sign on to be part of the group that wants to explore and get more information. I think chiefs on the fire side are a little more excited about it than maybe on the blue side, because we have some concerns, obviously, where we house prisoners or keep people in the station or things of that nature. But yeah, discussed it. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't, you know, show up and get all the information and make decisions that come from the information presented. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Chief Achilles. I know he's got a number of comments to bring forward.
And to echo the comments of Police Chief Paulus, he's correct. I think both organizations, both the police and fire department are pretty stable right now and have been making some strides to improve. And one area that we've identified that the next area is emergency communications. It's not just the building, because we're very appreciative of the space we have, but the overall operations, the standards, and both the needs of the police and fire department when it comes to emergency communications. There is a move, as the Chief said, from the state. They're trying to consolidate a lot of the individual communication centers. That way, they're not dealing with hundreds of them. And I know the Metro West area, there's no regional dispatch. So that meeting, I think that he went to, I had a captain go through, and I'm not sure if Lisa was able to make it. But from all levels of state, there's a very strong interest in trying to find a location out in the Metro West area. The advantage, of course, is they have $22 million right now earmarked for the projects to get them going. In the future, one way or the other, our communication center is gonna have to improve. And we're gonna start competing against these regional centers for funds. I know capital-wise, in the next three to seven years, we'll be looking at upgrading our infrastructure again, because it's technology. And that has a pretty hefty price tag. So I agree with Chief Paulus that this is a good time to at least commit to the exploration of regional dispatch with some area partners, so we can leverage the funds and resources. I think we would be remiss if we didn't enter this opportunity. What it shows at the end, maybe we stay like we are, maybe we do something regional close by, maybe regional in another town. But I think it's a great opportunity to move emergency communications, which is critical to both the police and fire departments, forward.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I actually had the opportunity to go and see the regional center in Foxborough. Pretty impressive place. The majority of it was paid for by state funds. I guess that's the safest way to say it. Monies that are paid on cell phones and whatnot. So that's part of the 22 million the Chief is talking about. It's a pretty impressive place. Some of the things, some of the comments made by some of the other chiefs were, if you don't get in at this point to at least explore, and then you tried to come in on the back end, typically, there's not an opportunity to do that. So I think it would be remiss if we didn't at least explore this space. And again, some of the costs the Chief has talked about that we're gonna have to upgrade at the current public safety building as far as technology and whatnot. So that being said, we'll just kind of go down the line. We'll see if there's any comments for the Chief. Chelsea, we'll start with you this time.
Thank you, Chiefs, for coming this evening. What would next steps be in terms of exploration with this? Would this be looking at, in terms of what we currently have for Southborough and what it would mean in the future? Or and where is the process at with the other towns? Like, what kind of timeline are we looking at?
I get the sense that the towns of Westboro, Marlboro and Grafton have some very strong interest. And if we were to be interested, and I think the next step is to demonstrate that we are willing to explore this. Because then you can start designing, you know, identifying, is it, if it's best for our own town to have it, or is it a regional approach where it's outside of town? What would the makeup be? Because it would be potentially eight organizations or departments. You know, police and fire for each community. At some point, when you want to get into the funding aspect, and they'll front load some funding grants, you need to, the state wants a commitment. They don't want people to go for these grants, spend money and then find out that they don't want to do it. So I think having the board selectmen formally vote that they support our exploring this regional concept at least gives us that opportunity to enter into these discussions with the other towns in the state.
So just to follow up on that, I would be in favor of exploring this. And I would want to make sure that we do some sort of formal study, what internal may make the most sense, given, you know, what experience or the expertise that we have between both of you in Southborough. And just to, you know, walk out over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, from a financial perspective, you know, how much money we're spending now, what kind of funding we are at risk of losing, because regionalization is kind of at the forefront for the state. And what that means overall. The other pieces for the dispatch center. I think what you had mentioned, Chief Achilles, is that over the next three to seven years, we're gonna have to replace that equipment. Is there anything else that we invested in for that room? Or if we just took the equipment out, is it purely just a room? You know, looking at all of those aspects, so that we can explain to the residents what this means, you know, for our town. And then, you know, your expertise on operations and how you deal with some of the things that Chief Paulus is concerned about, making sure we have alternatives for whatever we're doing directly in town. Thank you.
And I would just say that we're, I think all those things we'd have to do.
I would say we have to do those things as part of this. And with the other area towns, I think we would have some leverage of looking at what's the best options. And the cost, I want to just make sure people know, it's not just the room. And we've discussed this advisory and capital last couple of years. There's a lot of infrastructure, technology-wise throughout the town, that makes emergency communications system work. And, you know, we'll try to forecast what those expenses are gonna be. We know typically, most communities that run into this, when they have to upgrade, is in the millions of dollars between the equipment in the dispatch itself, physical dispatch, but also throughout the town. So I think we would be able to investigate what that is and what the cost is. And I'm sure it would go without saying that the police department would have to look at what other options exist. So when you enter the building, who's there? And that's a cost that we'd have to consider.
Are you all set, Chelsea? Mr. Healy?
Hi, Chief. You know, many years ago, in a prior life, I prosecuted a case where, after the Harvard riots in the late 60s, early 70s, there was a big push at regionalization, because they found, when they called on all the police departments, that they couldn't talk to each other. And the dispatching wasn't able to be coordinated. And so an organization was formed called the Greater Boston Police Council. I don't know if it still exists, but it was 50-some communities in Eastern Massachusetts. And the prosecution is because the guy they got to coordinate ended up stealing money from them. But we're assuming that's not gonna happen. But there were incredible economies of scale that were brought, because, you know, one community buying, then it was Motorola radios and stuff like that. But one community buying the necessary technological infrastructure and all like is incredibly costly. If you spread that over, you mentioned eight. I'm assuming that's four communities with four police, four fire. I guess my, one of my reactions is in terms of exploring this, is, you know, the more you spread around, it just strikes me, the more you spread around the potential cost. Number one, the more effective the regional approach is, but also less expensive it is gonna be for the town. So that would be, I mean, I think it's a great idea to explore. You know, I don't know what the merits of it are right now. But certainly encourage the effort, because I think any sort of regionalization like that has got the potential to be a real plus. So those are my thoughts on it. And I think that was my radio, my telephone that was ringing. I'm gonna put it on mute now.
Mr. Stivers?
Thank you. Interesting idea. And I certainly support exploring it to see what's there. I've also been, I guess, part of conversations historically about this kind of possibility. And I know it's too early, but I'm curious if this moves forward in a way that winds up consolidating the regionalizing dispatch. Do we actually have the space here that it could wind up being in Southborough? Or have the other implementations of this that you've seen say that, no, you have to have, you know, five times the floor space than that we have to actually make this work across a larger number of communities? My guess is that it's the technology that sort of keeps it all. It takes the space and you have a fairly small number of people in a larger physical area typically, but I don't really know. Is that something that we could wind up hosting something like this potentially?
In this particular instance, no. It's looking at a conglomerate that's in a separate building, has its own infrastructure, has its own supervisor, has its own locker rooms, a big operation. So it is possible to regionalize with other departments where our room would be available. However, the kind of setup in this area is we'd be looking for probably a smaller entity to join with us. I'm not sure that there's anybody in this immediate geographical area that's looking to do that. And that's, you'd get a little bit more grant money to do that. But the state is actually looking to build out with bigger entities to do that. So this is a standalone and it would, you know, probably separate myself and the Chief, you know, away from any type of oversight or control over. And if I could.
The facility in Foxborough that does four communities, that used to be either a Mima or Verizon comm center that was critical. And so it's basically a hardened facility that can operate 24 hours a day, 365, in all kinds of man-made disasters. Because communications, the idea is they can't go down, they're critical. And for the four communities during the day, they'll have eight dispatchers. You know, two call takers and six. And then at night, when it's not as busy, around five. So the Chief Paulus is correct. When you do something like this, they, you want it to be staffed at the right level. And for our facility right now, we could put three dispatchers in there. But it's, again, it's part of our facility. And that would be a consideration. I know some of the preliminary discussions are to find a location in one of the, either Southborough, Marlboro, Westboro, if possible, you know. And they're looking at a whole bunch of options, if that's what we do. Chief Paulus mentioned that other option might be a smaller scale where we do something regional, but it's hard to get those partners.
Thank you. Again, I'm certainly in favor of exploring and seeing what it looks like. And then we've got better numbers. Look forward to then we can make a more intelligent decision about it. Yeah, conceptually interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers. Mr. Dennington?
I don't really have anything to add, which hasn't already been said. And it sounds like, you know, we're just voicing approval to begin exploring this. There's a lot of details which would need to be fleshed out later if we reach a point where we were actually considering doing this, right? So yeah, I have the same general views as everyone else has expressed. I think we should go forward and explore this.
Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Purple?
So just a little bit of additional background. And again, I do think it's important, the issues that Chief Achilles has brought up, and also the issues that Chief Paulus has identified. You know, again, we've set up the dispatch area as the front-facing, you know, option, you know, when people walk in the front door, that's what you see. How do we handle that issue? And also, how do you address some of the, some of the other responsibilities and roles that the dispatchers have, some of the police side issues? You know, those are things to take a look at. One of the reasons I think that this issue is before you tonight is trying to understand where the board is willing to go. So some of these other communities are being asked to put letters in, which have a certain level of commitment that, quite frankly, my position doesn't have, unless the board basically wants to grant that to me. So I don't want to be signing anything, committing us to look into anything that this board is not gonna support. Previously, in terms of regional dispatch, we've talked about us hosting, which I think is what Mr. Stivers was alluding to. And, but the opportunities seem to be for regional dispatch that is likely going to be a standalone facility outside of the town, or at least outside of our public safety facility. And so wanted to make sure, before we even started to look down that road as an option, that the board was comfortable in us doing that and making, as we've discussed tonight, a little, a preliminary commitment to be part of the exploratory process. You know, because again, and neither Chief had said this, but once you make the commitment to go into a regional, you can't go back. You cannot go back to a standalone again. If something happens with that, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, if something happens with that regional group and you want out, you've got to find someplace else to do it, because you can't go back to your individual piece app again. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's the only clarification, I think, you know, or the takeaway that I'm looking for tonight is if we're gonna go down this road, I think you'll be comfortable that I've got the support of the board behind me, that you're willing to look and explore these regional options.
Marty?
Yeah, I guess a follow-up on that, Mark. And I guess this is to the Chiefs. Assume that the result of the process was that what made the most sense for a regional dispatch unit, or whatever we want to call it, that it was a standalone facility, obviously independent, independent of the current public safety building. Is that something you all couldn't live with? You know, you don't know the details of it right now, so I'm not gonna ask you if you could live with it. But in other words, is it a non-starter? That if we're going to be, if a regional dispatch were not gonna be located in our own public safety facility, that that's something that you all, as chiefs in the public safety area, would not recommend? Does that make sense? Okay.
After hearing the presentation for a couple of years, certainly, it's becoming the wave of the future. So there's problems that go along with it. And, you know, we can have another meeting to start discussing that. But I think right now, we want to hear what they have to say. And then we have to make the decision that it's best for a police, fire and a community. So I think we have a lot more information to gather and make that decision. But right now, I'm willing to gather more. And I move off the line that I was on, you know, even when I first got here. So it's evolving all the time. And, you know, I'm willing, my ears are open.
And I also support that to improve communications and mutual response with our mutually partners. Occasionally, we use Ashland when we get a larger emergency now and it's not on site. So I'm comfortable with that. And there was some discussion that we will have some level of input, is using oversight or some kind of advisory board, if it gets to that level. But I agree that we should explore this, and getting that support would be really good.
So, Madam, excuse me one second, Chief. So, Madam Chair, are you looking tonight for a motion to, what, to? I'm comfortable actually giving Mr. Purple the authority to be our, you know, eyes and ears and have the authority to coordinate with the chiefs on this. I don't know how the other members feel, but it makes perfect sense to me.
So I think the, you know, just to illustrate what the chief has said and to answer your question more directly, we're not in until we start taking money, right? So once you start accepting the grants and everything, and that, that is really when your level of commitment is all in. And so I think, I appreciate, you know, the direction. And now I think, you know, we've got the ability to, you know, reach back to some of these communities and these efforts and say, we'd like to be part of it, we'd like to understand it, we'd like to understand how some of our other needs are going to be met, you know, through this process. And again, what makes sense for us? I think we're going to come away with a good understanding of what's the best situation for us in terms of dispatch.
So Lisa, you're comfortable with us, we don't need to take a vote. Mark's got, you've heard what we've had to say. Okay.
No, absolutely, Marty. I think, I think this was the direction that Mark was looking for. I don't, I don't think it required a vote. All right, before we move on from this, sorry, sorry, go ahead, Chief.
Have one other comment in our discussions, and it's been a topic for the last few years. Just want to let you know, as we're pursuing this, the current dispatch operation probably has to expand going forward. And that's sooner rather than later. We've kind of been operating on a one dispatcher per shift. In fact, with only four full-time dispatchers, we have what's called open shifts, because it just doesn't cover the twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week model. So we've been backfilling that with overtime and pot timers. But we need to expand that, maybe expand the supervision over there and expand the operation a little bit. So I'll be looking at, you know, the upcoming budget by probably adding at least one other full-time personnel and maybe some supervision over in that unit. And they have their contract negotiation coming up this year. So I think one way or the other, we have to, just to put that topic out there, that we have to look at expanding the operation from the current, you know, one dispatcher handling police and fire at one time. And I think Chief Achilles would agree with me.
Thank you, Chief. Actually, Andrew and Chelsea both set their hands up, so Andrew, go ahead.
Put my hand down now, okay. One piece of information that I think will be useful for the next time this topic comes up is, since one of the things which is driving it is, is there might have to be a very expensive technology upgrade if we didn't do this, and how much money that would cost. So I just wanted to mention that issue now, so that the next time the issue comes up, it'd be helpful for me if, you know, there's a ballpark number on that of, if we didn't go this route, how much money would we need to spend to upgrade the technology? Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Sorry. Thank you, Andrew. Chelsea?
So I, I agree with that, and I'm supportive of Mark kind of throwing our hat and nodding and saying, yeah, we're interested. But I think that this, the questions that need to get answered are bigger than Mark. I think we need to put some sort of working group or committee together to study this. Because I think it's important for, like, I looked at Acton and Concord, they're regionalizing right now. And they had like a whole study that was done on kind of the points that I made earlier. So I really think that we need to put something more robust together so that the residents understand what the pros and cons are of doing this from their perspective, given that we just built a new public safety building. And so that they understand what resources are coming down the line, as Chief Paulus just said, and all of the infrastructure that goes into it.
All right. Thank you, Chelsea. So again, Chelsea, let me ask you, so in Acton, the study group that they put together, do you know what the makeup of that study group?
Off the top of my head, I don't, because I just scanned the report. I can see if I can find it, I'll put it in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Marty.
Chelsea, I agree with you completely, that, 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 you know, if we end up being up to our knees or higher in exploring this, that we absolutely need exactly what you described. I guess my inclination is I'm not sure that we're there yet. And I'd hate to go through the effort of, of, you know, corralling a number of volunteers if it turns out that the preliminary look is that the other towns aren't interested or, you know, of a, an initial financial look at it or otherwise, just doesn't pan out. So I guess I agree with you, I just think it's a little early for us to have to do that.
A quick comment, I did look at the Acton Concord thing, and they had the Collins Center do a study for them. So that might be an interesting resource to take a look at. I don't always agree with what they do, but it's a good outside view of the pluses and minuses there, so that might be informative to check.
All right, thank you, Mr. Purple.
So I think that, and I'm looking at Chief Achilles, is understanding the process, because I don't think anybody was prepared to talk about process tonight beyond simply, do you want to look at an outside regional dispatch center? And to Ms. Malinowski's point, I don't know that once we get into a group, you know, I assume there's going to be representatives that are going to be part of this larger discussion, and we can determine who we're going to pull in for those discussions. So that may be the point, you know, and I'm not sure if we're looking at, we want to set up our own group, you know, and then we want representation to the larger group. I think it's first understanding what maybe some of these, you know, we're going to have to hire a consultant. Consultants are going to have to take a look at this, I'm sure they're going to look at the individual needs and issues. And that may help us to identify the pros and cons. Again, I'm just spitballing here, because, you know, we really need to, we need to put our foot in the door first before we can find out some of these things. And again, I intend to commit only to the point that we can get information, that we can get an understanding. And then we can, you know, as the Board of Selectmen, you can make some decisions as to what our next steps are going to be. So that's, that's really, I think, as far as, as I intend to go. And but maybe, you know, and again, Ms. Malinowski, I'm not sure if that helps you in terms of a local process versus, you know, this group getting together. And I'm not sure what consultants may be doing for the larger group that we may benefit from.
Go ahead, Chelsea.
I just want, I just wanted to make sure that I understood what we were committing Mark to being responsible for, because I just think that there's probably a lot of, a lot more questions than answers. And I just want to make sure that we, we, you know, this is now out in the open. And I just want to make sure that people understand that we're going to go through the proper study to make sure that this is a good, great fit for what we're looking for.
All right, Chelsea, thank you. I agree, I think this is a starting point. And, but I also, I agree that there's going to be a lot of study that's going to have to take place, Chelsea. And we're going to need a lot of public involvement in this as well, public forums and participation as well. So, but I think this is a good starting point for today. So, Mark, do you have what you need to move forward?
Yes, no, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, so let's go to item E. Chief Achilles article request for special town meeting, authority of fire department. Since this was put in the packet and on the agenda, some new information has come to light. So I am going to turn this over to Mr. Purple.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Chief. So I just wanted to speak to this issue a little bit tonight, you had some information in the packet. Chief Achilles has been going through the checklist in terms of getting the fire department accredited, similar to what Chief Paulus did for the police department a couple of years ago. And one of the boxes that needs to be checked is obviously the authority of the strong chief, which falls historically under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section forty-two, and in some respects, Sections forty-three and forty-four. And it was not readily apparent in the code that this had been adopted. And, and I will, from the outset, apologize that this is in the packet now in front of you, because it would have been nice to have the answer that I sent to you this afternoon, which really would have negated this probably being on the agenda at all. In nineteen twenty, the legislature passed the Acts of nineteen twenty, Chapter five ninety-one, Sections twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, essentially created the strong chief on the fire department. And the town accepted that on, at the August sixth, nineteen twenty-one town meeting. So that strong chief authority has been in place in the town for a hundred years. That language mimics, almost identically in most instances, the language in, in Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four. I did consult with Town Council this afternoon, and he concurred that there really is no reason for the town to, to go further and adopt forty-eight, forty-two, or forty-eight, forty-three, that, that authority already exists from the previous authorization. I would, and Mr. Healy can fully correct me, but because the language is so similar, you know, I have to guess from a layman's perspective that the special act was created, and then that language was simply transferred into a mass general law very shortly thereafter. Because I had seen, for example, the town of Andover, I believe, accepted forty-eight, forty-two in nineteen twenty-four. So it must have been shortly thereafter. But again, check with council, there is no need to address this. I think this gives the chief everything he needs and allows him to check that box. And again, council has, has given his opinion. So again, you know, my apologies that that, that whole backstory couldn't have been done before this ended up on the agenda. But it will prevent a couple of articles from showing up on a special town meeting.
Mr. Healy?
Mark, you mean to tell us you're not, you're not conversant in what went on in the nineteen twenty town meetings for the town of Southborough? I'm shocked.
I will tell you, though, the one thing I did find, and I noted this in my email to the board, is that it is, is amazing how many swings that this town has taken to, to look at a town manager form of government. You know, in the forties, in the sixties, I think there was something in the eighties. And it actually did pass. I think, and I have to go back and look, I believe it was in the sixties. But unfortunately, the quorum was questioned, and there was no quorum, so therefore the vote was nullified. So really, this, that's been snake-bitten, but that was part of, part of what I, you know, found in my research.
Well, answering your question, I, it sounds like what happened is that, is that the town adopted it under one statute, one statutory language, and then there was subsequent statutory language that, that happens. And I think the only, I think I agree with, basically, I agree with Town Council, that a subsequent statute could negate what happened at town meeting. But it can't, it's not necessary to reinforce. So I think I agree with, with Mr. Talaman's opinion that the articles, while they would have been a good idea, just aren't necessary.
All right, great, thank you. Before we move on, any, Chelsea, Andrew, if you have a comment or a question? Nope, Mr. Stivers, you're good. Chief Achilles, yep, go ahead, Chief.
And to Mark's point, one of the things we look at is make sure we have the legal authority to be a fire department. And there's different ways to organize a fire department in Chapter forty-eight, one way. And then I worked with Mark, we did some digging, and we found some, that special act of nineteen twenty. So besides this, what we call the strong chief, it was really the focus of, what do we, what is the fire department organized as and how does it operate legally? Because that is one of the accreditation, accreditation things, which is probably a good thing for just the general world to be legally organized and have some function. So that's really what the impetus was, and I'm comfortable with what council said.
All right, I guess that's done. Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you very much, you are now dismissed. Go home and take Mr. Chief out for something to eat. All right, next up, Carla McCullough, town accountant, COVID-nineteen update, proposed consultant contract. So Carla and Brian, Carla, why don't we have you come up to the table? And Brian, do you want to go? Just so we can see the two of you. This is great, this is, this is working.
Okay, good evening. Um, yes, there was quite a bit of info in the packet. It'd been a while since I had provided an update on the federal guide, the federal funding. I apologize for the date, I think I was just thinking of a simpler time, June twentieth, twenty seventeen. So interested in the update. So since I had issued this memo in the packet, there's actually been some updates. Actually, CARES is scheduled to end December thirty-first. Their final drawdown was supposed to be October twenty-ninth, but they've come out and said that there is going to be additional guidance. So I don't know if that means they're extending or, or what. So we're hanging in the balance, waiting for that. With FEMA, public assistance, and the FEMA vaccine, they are now two separate reimbursement applications. And we're in the process of compiling both of those. ARPA, we actually, last week, we had less money, because today we got nine hundred and ninety-one thousand delivered to us via wire. So we now have half of our ARPA allocation, the county and the state money as well. There is going to be additional guidance to be issued on or around September first. And we're looking forward to seeing what that has to say, because there's still a lot to unpack with, with this grant opportunity. And the federal infrastructure bill was passed by the Senate, and it's working its way through, through the House. And we don't know what that's going to bring to us. So we have a lot going on, federal guidance. Anybody who says accounting is boring, never worked in accounting during COVID. So this brings us to the contract. Is there any questions on the update?
Yes, actually, can we start there? I just had one, one question for you, and again, I apologize. I came in early to talk to you, and I never made it down there. I don't know if you have this. Do we have any idea so far, as far as CARES and FEMA, what we've submitted and what we've been reimbursed for to date? And again, I'm not. Okay, go ahead, Chelsea.
No, you just went off mute, so I couldn't hear you.
Did you hear any of it?
Yeah, like the last sentence I didn't hear.
Okay, the last sentence was probably just, that Kyle was usually pretty prepared for this stuff anyway, so.
Okay. Um, to date, for FEMA, we have received sixty-six thousand dollars. We have, a lot of the items that we did submit to FEMA the first time around were denied and shifted over to CARES. But in total, what we have spent for FEMA is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For CARES, we have received fifty-nine thousand, we have spent two hundred and eighty- For CARES, we have received fifty-nine thousand. We have spent two hundred and eighty-one thousand of our CARES allocation. We're trying to spend our allocation, and part of the issue is that FEMA is now covering testing. So if CARES covered the testing instead of FEMA, we would be up to five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we're trying, but that's where we're at now with CARES. And then for vaccination, our portion of the regional clinic was eighty-three thousand dollars, almost eighty-four thousand. And we have received nothing yet. We're gonna, we have to reduce our expenses by any vaccine reimbursements we receive as well. So that may actually be like a send-back after, by the time they process all that, but and for ARPA, we received so far one point five million.
Great, thank you. What do you do next, Marty? Mr. Purple had wanted something to add to that.
I just have a quick question for Ms. McCullough. Obviously, as we're entering into the school, the new school season, and I anticipate we're probably going to do some level of testing. You know, and they've talked about ways to keep the kids in the schools. So, you know, I mean, even if you're symptomatic and everything, they will test you every day. Is that testing going to still fall to, and this may be an unfair question, is the testing still going to fall to FEMA? Or do you think that may shift? I assume that's going to be an expense that's going to have to go somewhere.
Right. Well, right now, what FEMA, well, we have heard that FEMA is going to wrap up in September, but they have to give us thirty days' notice. And I think with what's going on, there is a good chance it may be extended. I did speak with Becky Pellegrino from the school, and they were looking into a testing option that actually was supported by the state. I know Mary Ellen Dunn was on a call regarding that, and if that is what they go with, maybe there will be no cost to us, and it will be, you know, as costly as the state right now. Again, another unknown.
All right, Mr. Healy.
Carla, thanks. And I don't know, maybe this is jumping the gun in terms of the consultant you're going to talk about. But when the chair was asking you questions, you were referring to a sheet in terms of where the numbers are. I'm just wondering if on a weekly or a bi-weekly basis, you are, you and your department are generating numbers that show what are, basically what you described.
Right.
And believe me, the last thing, my instincts are not micromanagement instincts, but I do like information. And I'm just wondering if I would find it incredibly helpful on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, just see those numbers and to see how they're progressing, what column things are going in. And again, I don't want to create extra work for you, but it strikes me, it's the sort of thing you probably have on the system. I mean, am I right about that?
Well, right now, we have there are numbers that I have. I'm not certain that the shift between FEMA and CARES is going to change, because we've booked it one way, and now it's being covered by another. I'm still sorting out all of the back and forth between FEMA and CARES, because we applied for a bunch of FEMA money. They denied it. It's been with CARES. I'm still in the process of calling all that out, but once I have it, I'll happily provide it for you. The ongoing expenses, like from, you know, July on, I'm good with those numbers, but we book them in a certain way. It doesn't mean that's where they're going to go. They're shifting fans.
Again, I don't know what the other members of the board feel. I'm less interested in the detail about where it goes than to see, well, the allocation and also what the bottom line numbers are.
Oh, okay.
In other words.
More high-level.
Exactly.
Okay.
How much money has been allocated, how much money has been spent, what column it's gone into?
But that may change, that's all I'm saying.
I understand, but see, even that's important.
Yeah.
To know that again, it's not an instinct to micromanage you. It's just, it is, you know, getting the information on a Tuesday night is helpful, but getting it every Tuesday so we can see how it's flowing. Again, I hope we wouldn't be peppering you with questions. I certainly would not. But it would be, again, it would be a way to sort of keep us informed going along, as opposed to, you know, just getting it out every month or so. So if you're going to be generating those numbers in a way that would be producible on a simple spreadsheet to us, I would find that incredibly helpful. And I suspect, this cook is not lurking out there, she often is, but I suspect that members of the advisory committee would also find it very helpful.
Tells me you might be spot on with that.
All right, Mr. Stivers, do you have anything?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Thanks, Carla. Thanks for the update. And I agree with Marty that if there's some way that's relatively low overhead for you to produce summary periodically, that's very interesting. Also, I was interested in your comment about the CARES money. Is there is there some source that we are in danger of losing the opportunity to get reimbursed by if we can't find the right things to spend for? It sounded to me like there may be some of those things out there. And if there are, I think that'd be an interesting conversation to have larger group talking about it, the ways we creatively find ways to move the money around so we get the maximum reimbursements there.
For CARES?
Through CARES, between CARES and FEMA and whatever. I don't, you clearly are more focused on the details than I am, but there's money that we're potentially going to lose opportunities to get reimbursed for. Then if there are things we ought to be doing to either change the way we deliver services, or other options might be, but I hate to lose opportunity because we aren't sort of doing the right things from a programmatic standpoint or whatever. So I mean, and I know the finance world doesn't drive the programs, but selectmen sometimes do at least. So if there are things we should be doing in terms of reality and responsibilities to various organizations to spend the money in the right kind of ways to get the maximum reimbursement, that'd be useful conversation to have.
I think that's why I can stop on Oh, sorry.
Okay. I think, and again, jumping head to the consultant, I think that they would provide the view of overall, and it would be very helpful, it would be of value to the board. It would be of value, I know to me, but it would be of value to the board to have a plan in place and look at different pathways and, you know, I know what the towns that I'm talking to are doing at the, you know, the level that I'm at, but maybe looking, you know, from a bird's eye view would be very helpful.
And I have one more. One more question. I've been following the ARPA stuff more closely than the CARES or FEMA stuff, but have we done a calculation of the lost revenue number for ARPA? Do we have the data we need to do that now or near term, or is that something that, again, we're not going to know the base numbers for to calculate until some month's time through?
That is something that we were waiting for the additional guidance to come out in September, around September first. I mean, I think what we learned with CARES is don't take the ball and run with it, because it looks like a different ball three months later. So we, you know, the interim final rule, that's such a, like, conundrum of a kind of a title. You know, so we figured when the next guidance came out on September first or around that date, then we would take a look at it and see what that has to say.
Thanks. That's it for me.
Mr. Dennyton?
Most of the questions I had had to do with the ARPA side of things, and I don't know if we're going to, and the consultant contract, I don't know if we're going to get into that later, because I know most of the questions here are focused just on CARES and FEMA. So we'll get to that later. Okay, thanks.
Chelsea?
So I don't necessarily have a new question, but I think just a reaction to Marty and Sam's comments. And also maybe it is a question. So Carla, for what you're qualifying right now for CARES and FEMA, is it mostly payroll?
Oh, okay. For FEMA and CARES currently, it's testing on the FEMA side, as well as FEMA is covering Board of Health as well right now. I mean, basically, we don't have a ton of other types of charges coming through right now like we did a year ago. So we're basically testing and payroll.
Okay, so I think Marty, to your point or question on seeing it week over week, where payroll's every other week, I just don't think that you're going to see the value of getting that report, because nothing could change if it's not a payroll week. So maybe a monthly report so that you can see what's hitting those buckets. I just, I think, you know, working with Carla as a finance liaison and kind of understanding how she goes through her qualification for what qualifies for CARES and FEMA as of right now, it's, you know, validating that the hours that the Board of Health employees are spending is related to COVID and making sure that that can qualify under either the FEMA or CARES bucket. But I don't think that we're having the the high volume of expenses that we were seeing before. So just a thought there that that might be more valuable to us to look at.
Believe me, I'm not wedded to the timeframe. By the same token, though, if if, you know, on August first, because it's the beginning of the month, it was, you know, some number, and it's not going to change until September first, then basically we'd be getting the same thing. So in other words, I don't care about the timeframe. I just, I'm more concerned about the information. But I don't disagree at all with what you're saying. But by the same token, if things aren't changing a whole lot, getting basically the same information and looking and being able to confirm that strikes me as no big deal. But, as I said, I'm pretty agnostic about the actual timeframe.
Chelsea, did you want to respond to that? Okay, great. So I guess monthly then, if that works. Carla, I just have one follow-up question. With talk of additional vaccines being required, and I don't know if you're hearing, kind of through the grapevine, I'm sure people are talking, that would probably precipitate FEMA extending, you know, past September. I don't know if you've heard anything about.
Yes, I, we, I actually have to follow up with Neil this week. I don't know if they're hearing something on the fire sector or Board of Health. I haven't checked in with them, but right now, there's FEMA Public Assistance, which is a separate reimbursement for vaccine. So we could have another round, you know, with that. I don't know if they'll put the regional clinic in place or how they will handle it, but yeah, again, I just, my heart of hearts, like, you know, I don't think this is going away, like CARES originally said in October. We want all your expenses estimated through December, and now they're staying on that. So I really feel, I mean, they've already said we have to do quarterly spending reports through September twenty-two. But, you know, who knows? It's an exciting time.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Carla. And I wasn't trying to put you on the spot on that, because obviously, things change on a daily basis. And again, we appreciate all of the additional time. When you came back to Southborough, you didn't necessarily anticipate spending on all of this. So we appreciate you very much for that. So that being said, we'll jump into the proposed consultant contract.
Okay. Well, we included in the packet a proposal from CSS, which is a, it's a local company under our under our noses, we didn't realize, in the next town of Marlboro. But Brian and I have been reaching out and talking with folks and trying to find out, you know, find a contractor that could help us out. I mean, it's very rare, like, big cities and big towns, they're hiring employees. I have to be honest, I think Brian and I are on the same page, correct me if I'm wrong, that I don't think we need an employee at this point to come on board, a full-time employee, but some help is much needed and would be appreciated right now. It is a cost that is, we could charge it to the grant. And this particular contract, we are not locked into an amount. We pay for what we use. So we, you know, I feel it's a responsible proposal, and again, it would provide value to the board. It would provide value to the finance team and just a different bird's eye view and look at the federal funding overall and create paths and kind of just look at it from a different vantage point.
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. No, thank you. And thank you for looking into this. Brian, I don't know if you want to add anything to that? Okay, go ahead.
So I'll just add that, yeah, we started this process a little while ago, and at the time, there was very few folks we could find and locate. We reached out to a number of firms, and I have a feeling some of them were out of state, some of them were national, and they seemed to be tied up with bigger fish. I think the cities are probably a step or two ahead of towns just because of the, you know, the amount of money we're talking about. On the MMA site and some other job sites, we've seen definitely an uptick in communities. I was just telling Carla today, Lowell is the latest hiring, I think it was a CARES Finance Director or something. So you're just seeing a lot more of them out there. I don't think that there's going to be too many towns doing this on their own. I mean, it's just, there's just no way. It's, there's too much money flowing out there with too many regulations and too many, you know, things going on to, you know, you don't want to be exposed either by trying to do this in-house and just, you don't have the resources. So that's silly, too. So I think it's a good option. It starts a conversation. The consultant's just a piece of what's going to happen, whether the board wants to form a committee, or, you know, obviously, there's going to have to be community input, or all the communities in the state and nationally are facing this, where, you know, the decisions have to be made, where we're going to allocate these resources. So it's a big decision, it's a big discussion. It's not going to be resolved tonight, but this is a good piece of it that we can kind of lock down and and get moving on. We're not going to waste time. I think we're agreed that if this is approved, we're going to try to get started in the next week or two, at the most, if you want to hit the ground running. So some of the folks in this consultant have been in the municipal business before. The particular contact we have has been higher level. She's been a town administrator before, or a town manager. So you know, I think that is extremely helpful. So I think we can navigate this, but it is something that we can't just put to the side and hope we can let Carla handle it or the finance team. That's probably not going to happen. So, but it's good. It's all good. It's a great opportunity for the community. So we're excited about it. We're excited about, you know, hopefully getting someone in and and starting to look, you know, starting to get a game plan, sort of like you just did with the communications, you know, getting a a plan going, so.
Thank you, Brian. So Chelsea, I'm going to jump to you, because I know you were, you've worked closely with the finance team on all of this. Is there something you'd like to add? Go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks, Carla and Brian, for the overview. There are a few things that I really liked about this. One was that it included more than just the ARPA funding, so it included the CARES and anything COVID-related. So if anything else pops up, then they could incorporate it into that. The second thing was I liked that the background of the project manager was in municipal government. So I think she has a good fit for this. I also liked that, you know, as we talk about regionalization, as Brian alluded to, and being able to use resources, it's going to free Carla up from having to sit on all those webinars that she has to for ARPA to see what's going on, because this is what they do on a day-to-day basis for other municipalities. So I think that's important and get ideas from them on how do you incorporate resident feedback, and how do you set up a working group, and what's the right mix of people to do this, and also the guidance on the projects that we could do. You know, do you do one larger project, or do you break it up into smaller ones? How does, you know, what the information we got from Representative Dykema fit into this in addition to the three point one million? So I think there's a lot of different guidance opportunities that we could get from this, and it's not just ticking and tying and doing your debits and credits. So I think that there's like, you know, the consulting piece to this, as well as somebody that has a pretty To this as well with somebody that has a pretty robust background. So I felt pretty comfortable after reading through the contract and asking a bunch of questions. About how we would incorporate different aspects to this, so I appreciate Brian and Carla's time in presenting this to us, thank you.
Great, Chelsea, thank you, I also found very helpful. The questions that were provided to the board as well, the six questions that you had asked, I actually had a few of those myself, so. I found that helpful, so we'll, we'll open it up, Sam, why don't we start with you?
Thanks, as I'm sure folks recall, I'm very enthusiastic about the concept here. Finding outside help, I think it makes a lot of sense for many reasons, not the least of which is that's Carla and Brian. Do the things they were hired to do more and gives external perspective. I do have some questions about the selection process, did we actually, is this something we have to actually go out to bid for, given the amount of money here? Advertise and so on and so forth, or can we do this?
Sorry, can you correct me if I'm. I think it was fifty thousand is the threshold, Sam, so we're just under it.
But we did reach out to several other businesses and like a lot of times, we didn't hear back, or, you know, they, like Brian said. They focused on bigger fish, you know, in the scheme of things, we're small, so. I feel like we did some due diligence and did some digging to to find this, it wasn't just the first one that came around.
And again, I'm, I'm torn on this because I looked at their website and it. It sort of looks to me like they do a lot of things, they advertise community engagement, website design, crisis management, so forth. And so sometimes, having been a consultant myself for many years, I know there's a temptation to grab the latest hot thing. And advertise yourself as an expert and to snag a few projects. And again, I, I, I was thinking more along the lines of people who actually have either legal experience or legislative experience. State government connections, federal government connections, et cetera, et cetera, have some basis. In that world is a starting point, on the other hand, I can believe what you're saying in terms of there are a lot of people out there trying to make money off this, and they're looking for. Bigger targets than Southborough, so we probably are not likely to have the twenty companies trying to find our business here. So it seems to me there's huge value in speed, and so I'm. Overall, I guess, comfortable with trying to see, seeing how it works, because I think having somebody available quickly. Who does have the town administration experience, which I think is an important aspect of it, but not the only one. And seeing how it goes, and if we think we're getting good value, we can continue, if we don't, then. You suggest you pay for what you, what you use here and you can go in a different direction, but. Huge value in being early to the party, and I think we've always lost some of that, frankly, so I'm in favor of moving forward, thanks.
Great, thank you, Sam, I'm just surprised you didn't say they specialize in grant writing. I mean, there's additional opportunities. Go ahead, Brian.
I just wanted to make one comment on top of yours, and that's, I did vet. The company a little bit, I called a couple of the other communities I've worked with, one of them was my hometown Holden, so. I talked to the DPW director there and Clinton and some other areas, so. I got positive feedback on that, so I just want you to know that we, we did do a little walkthrough of these folks, but again. The, obviously, Mr. Purple, myself and Carla, you know, and of course, the board, if they don't perform the way we want, they're, they're not going to last long, so.
Thank you, Brian, Mr. Dennington.
I thank you for coming forward with this, and I think this is what we need to kind of jumpstart the ARPA process, I mean, the one just. Observation I had in looking at their proposal was, there wasn't really a formal statement of work, and the. Services they were prepared to offer, you know, one of them was a preparation of a proposed plan of projects to be undertaken. Through available ARPA funding, ultimately, though, that's really a policy. Decision that we have to make, right, about ultimately how the money is going to be spent, it's really. CSS can provide the technical. Assistance, being on top of the eligibility rules and things like that, right?
Sorry, okay. Yes, Andrew, definitely, you know, the. CSS can provide a plan, they can provide a path, they can do if then scenarios, but ultimately, the selectmen will be in charge of where we. And drive this, this funding, and again, it's bigger than all of us, right, it's, it's historical funding. So we really do want to make the most of it, and, you know, we feel like having an outside view would be a great value to the board and to. To us, too.
Just, just to add on to what Carla said, I think that, you know, it is important, it's much easier, I think, if the board has got a path, a recommendation to work from. Rather than just saying, here's fifteen things we should do. You know, you like a couple, someone else likes a couple, we're trying to build consensus, we cut out the ones. Have the consultant take a look and say, here's, based on the funding that's available. And the uses that are identified that are a priority, here's how I would prioritize your list on what you want to do. Mr. Dennington, I know that, you know, at the meeting, you were one who talked about, I think it was swing big, right? So let's look at one or two big projects instead of looking at fifteen or sixteen projects. We can ask the consultant, give us two approaches, how do we prioritize the fifteen or sixteen? And what are the two, you know, one or two of these, if we really want to take a big swing? How should, you know, which one should we really be focusing on? It doesn't mean the board has to go that way, it just gives the board a path to explore, but you still, as, as Carla said, ultimately hold the decision.
Andrew, do you have anything further? Okay, Chelsea, I'm going to skip you and come back to you, I'm going to let Marty go.
All right, great, thanks. I think the idea is a terrific idea, I think not, it's more than a terrific idea, I think it's absolutely essential. So I guess a couple of comments first, number one, it, it sounds like. You've gone through a, what sounds like a reasonable vetting process for this outfit, and that you have a comfort level that they've. Performed well in the area with, with. Similarly situated towns, is that a fair statement? Okay. The, I mean, it's interesting, the document itself, it's, it's not. I mean, it, it, it looks sort of like a contract, but it's not a contract. It's a proposal, and so. I'm assuming, and I guess we could, you know, if necessary, just, you know. With a, with a letter or an email, just make it clear that this is, I mean, essentially at will. And the town can pull the plug on it. Whenever we, if we choose to, and so there's no real duration, I mean, it's not a one year contract or a six month contract or something like that. That's your understanding in terms of conversations with them, okay, I guess I'd, I'd like a comfort level that we just make that clear, and there's an email. Yeah, yeah, and I think that's, that was going to be my overall thing is to have, make sure town council is, 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 is comfortable with that. The funding source, from whence would this be paid? In other words, how would they be paid?
Comes right out of the CARES, Opera Grant, sorry, I'm getting to so many acronyms.
All right, that's really important. So it's in a weird way, and again, it's, I've said this before, there's just so much money sloshing around here. But, but, you know, in a weird way, if we didn't. Look to engage a consultant like this or hire someone else and pay for it with the CARES funding, then that's. A funding source that wouldn't be tapped. In other words, if we don't, if we don't spend the money, we lose the money. Again, geez, what, 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 what year is this? It's just, it's, it's a crazy concept, but, okay, so it's not, it's not. It's not coming out of, out of any, and Chelsea used, I was avoiding saying bucket, but you used it, so I'm going to dive back in. It's not coming out of a town bucket, basically, it's coming out of a, of a different funding source, and again, if we didn't tap it, then. It's, it's money that would be, the money potentially that would be lost to us, okay, that's really important. What, what is your understanding of what the reporting structure would be, would it be to you, Brian, to you, Carla, to both of you? In other words, who, who would, or Mark maybe, I don't know, in other words, it, it just strikes me that there needs to be, that that connection needs to be really. Solidified, so, because as I'm sure Mr. Stivers can tell you, consultants left on their own. Dangerous business. But somebody needs to ride herd on it, I'm wondering if you thought of what the process would be for that.
So I would say there's a couple of similar situations, at least the town administrator and myself were in with sort of like the health consultant where. I'm sort of the contact for day to day stuff. Then Mark comes in with more policy type stuff. And that's not how it's going to work with this, but I think I envision it as more Carla is going to be the day to day. I don't want to say work, but day to day, you know, granular stuff. And then Mark and myself are going to assist her. Especially Mark on some of the interaction at the board level and, and, you know. Being able to, you know, communicate and flow back and forth with, with, you know, the five of you, so, I mean, does that sound? Reasonably?
Yeah, I think, I think that that sounds reasonable, again, Carla's going to be assigning the work, you know, on a day to day basis. Any issues or anything, any larger pieces, Brian will be brought in, and again, if there's, you know, issues with performance or we're looking for them to do something, and again. Bringing that in, conveying that information from the consultant up to the board level is going to be my responsibility.
And the final thing is, and I say this, as, as, as I'm about to. Head out of state for, for five or six weeks. But accessible by Zoom, et cetera, I, and I don't know what other people's thoughts are, I'd like to meet these people. You know, and, and not for a big dog and pony show, that's the, but just for a conversation. And so maybe I'll leave that to the chair to figure out a good time, whether or not that's a good idea, and whether or not, what a good time would be, but I think. I applaud you folks for the instinct to, 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 to look outside the box and tap some resources that are clearly going to be needed. And again, this, this strange now financial fiscal whatever world, grant. World we find ourselves in and are going to find ourselves in, you know, heck, the big bills haven't even passed yet. So, so kudos for that, thanks.
So Marty, actually, that was one of the things I was going to bring up as well, I think it would be good for the board to meet them. Obviously, once we, we commit to this and move forward, I was hoping. Maybe on their availability where they're somewhat local, you know, maybe our meeting on the eighth would be a great opportunity. When are you going to have the best Zoom, Marty, at the first meeting or our second meeting?
It's going to be the eighth and the twenty second. The eighth, I know exactly where I'm going to be, so probably the eighth, the twenty second is a little bit up in the air.
Okay, so that's fine, so let's, let's, as we move forward with this, let them know we'd like them to come in for a meet and greet, and I. When I say come in, I say that facetiously as we go further down the line with other discussions we're going to have tonight, but. Yeah, so I agree, Marty, I think that it's a great opportunity, Andrew, you had your hand up again, so we'll go to you quickly.
I just wanted to complete a thought that Marty was talking about, which was, you know, the contract, which is in the packet, which. Didn't seem very complete, there was an email that was circulated. Before, before our meeting with a spreadsheet that had an hourly rate, so that's the. That's a key term, I think it was one sixty an hour for, for the consultant's time, so it really kind of should have been in the contract, but it, you know. That, that's, that's the term I think that you were looking for, Marty.
Thank you, John, I've responded, are you good? Okay, Chelsea, we're going to come back to you now.
I think Carla got cut off when she was explaining the funding source for this. And just so that I'm, I'm clear on what the answer was. It's, it's up to forty nine thousand dollars for this year, once the contract is signed, right, at a hundred and sixty dollars. An hour, and it will be funded through ARPA, which. It, it's not coming out of a town funded source, but it would reduce the overall amount that we would be spending on projects related to ARPA, correct? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Was that it, Chelsea? Okay, so, oh, go ahead, Mark, go ahead.
Just to, just to clarify, excuse me, just to clarify, Chelsea, there was a comment, I think, that was made, that it could be cares as well. And quite honestly, since we have cares available to us, we might as well use that up, and I believe, Carla, that if we. Commit to that up to, you know, up to that amount, even if cares does end, you've got, you know, the ability to finish out that, that amount that, that you're expending, correct? So in other words, so if we committed to the forty nine six. You know, and everything, and then cares ends, that's still, that commitment still exists under cares. Yes, okay, so that, I just want to make the point that that is another option, and since that one's starting to looking like it's going to expire soon, let's use that first.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Sorry, Chelsea, hold on one second, Carla wanted to make one more comment to that before we moved on, then I'll come back.
What would dictate what grant would be charged is what project that they're working on. If they're working with cares money, you know, cares grant type stuff, then we charge cares versus ARPA stuff to ARPA, so. That's all.
All right, Chelsea, back to you. That was my question, thank you. All right, thank you, so I, I think we're all in agreement, I think there's a great opportunity here that. Someone to guide this path, Carla, again, I worry about. The extra amount of work, and you've done a fabulous job, that's been kind of put on your plate with, again, trying to close. And the year and everything else that you've done, so I think this creates a great opportunity to be able to make your life a little easier as well. So I guess my question is, Mr. Purple, what is, what do you, or Carla, or Brian, what do you require from us tonight to move forward on this? I think it's pretty, pretty clear where the board is going.
So I think what we would be looking for from the board tonight is, is authorization, excuse me. Authorization for us to move forward with CSS, and obviously, given the comments that I subject to council review of the, of the contract.
All right, that being said, Mr. Healy, do you have something?
That the board. Approve and authorize the proposal for American Rescue Plan Act Grant Support Services submitted by Capital Strategic. Solutions with two provisos I can think of, number one, one suggested by Mr. Dennington, which is. To include the hundred and sixty. Dollar per hour rate, number two. Was I muted? I let my, I let my. Okay, reason number two, all right, I'm not muted for reason number two. Which is the one I suggested, which is just make clear that there's, that there's no fixed duration for the proposal. And that it is basically terminable at will by the, by the town, and then finally, overall, that it is subject to review by. Town Council, so that's my motion.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Let's see, Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Ms. Delanowski.
Aye.
Mr. Dennington.
Aye.
And Ms. Brascio, aye, so I think you have what you need to move forward on this, thank you both for coming tonight. Much, much appreciated, and, you know, for everything that you've done. So have a great night, next up, Ms. Gallagher. Yes, actually, we're going to take a three minute recess, we will be back at eight thirty. All right, welcome back to the Board of Selectmen meeting, 8:31. Andrew and Chelsea. Chelsea's there. Andrew, are you back?
I'm not back.
Oh, I'm not back either. How great was that? I don't like my picture taken. This is even better. So we will give Andrew another few seconds to jump back in. I don't want him to miss any of the updates that Karen has. So we'll give it one more minute and then we'll just move, we'll go forward. Awesome. Welcome back, Andrew. So, um, item G is quite the item, Karen. We, we appreciate you coming and literally spending most of your evening with us. So there are just, so Karen's aware as well, we're going to move the tree policy up and make it number nine. So we'll do that at the end, so you don't have to hang around any longer. So first up, I don't know how you want to handle this, Karen. Do you want to go? Sorry. Go ahead, Mark.
I, I just, there's some, she's got a lot of items here. There are some smaller items. And I don't know whether you get, my apologies.
I was just going to ask Karen on what you thought would be the, the most efficient way. Is that where you were going? To get some of the smaller ones or how, whatever you thought best. So wherever you want to start, I will, I will turn it over to you and we'll go from there.
Okay. Um, all right. A lot of them are intertwined. I'm trying to find one that's not. Okay. This is, yeah, that one's a little easy. So the cemetery, you know, Slav and Brascio had been asking about this. We did, we have a conservator who came in. He was only in for two days last week, trying to do upwriting our, some of the stones that have been laying down. We have our crew going and they've been, um, once a week going, they get about, they've been averaging 20 stones a day each time they go to, to either straighten, clean off, raise if they need it. And, um, so we're, they're little by little getting through the cemetery. I think at this point, we've, because of vacations, rain and stuff, we're a little bit, we, we weren't able to get like 10 full week, 10 week days in. But I think we probably, we ended up with about eight weeks that they were able to do it consistently, at least one day of the week. So, you know, we're over 100 stones in at least. Yeah. For, we're able to do the easier ones, the real, the older ones, we leave for the conservator. We don't want to get, we don't want to break something. So that one's kind of easy.
Are you going to move on from that one?
I, yeah, I can.
Well, no, I just said if you were, because I just wanted to say something before you did.
Okay. Yes, I'm ready to move on.
Okay. So no, I just, I just wanted to, um, sorry, thank you, Sam. I, I wanted to just let, make the board aware that Karen and I have been talking about this for a while. There's some stones that are broken. There's some stones that are, are cracked and whatnot. And I extremely appreciate the, the ability that Karen has found to have a conservator, is that the word? To, to come in and to look at some of these older stones that are in, in better shape. And, um, you know, I think it's, it's a service to all the families that have loved ones buried there. So I, I thank you very much for that, Karen. I, I think for anybody that walks there or goes in there, I think it's, it's really important. You know, it's, it's one of the, another one of the old cemeteries in town, but I think it's, it's very well represented. And, um, you know, the town takes great care in their cemetery. So I, I thank you for, for moving forward on that and, and the way that you have and, and hearing that 100 stones at this point have been righted in some way that may have been crooked or could have caused problems down the line. I think it's important. So I thank you for.
Well, I have, we're lucky. We have a good crew. George Mooney's been doing actually a lot of that. And the conservator, I can't even take credit for him. The Historic Society had, had them back when Kate Mattson had found him to do the old burial ground. So I wish I could take more credit, but I can't. I, uh, so a few of these things are rolled in, a few of them aren't. Why don't we talk about the Main Street project that kind of happened? How's that? That, that's sort of mostly over. So we do have a punch list, as it says in the memo. That, I don't have a date yet for that. We do have some issues with, um, how basically the contractor is going to come in. But they are kind of waiting on DOT to release some payments. They're a little notorious for being slow on that. As far as the telephone poles, which are annoying as heck, I know. Because it's Fios or it's, yeah, Verizon Fios, that has to be spliced at night due to consumer use. And supposedly they've been out there. I, I haven't been here at nights a lot overnight, but they're looking, they've been trying to get it done. Once they're done with it, which like I said, in here, it'll be done the first week of October, supposed to be. National Grid will be able to pull the poles and then Perkins will be able to come back and complete the work. You know, because a lot of places like the pole is right in the curb, right? So we have to put the curb in or, or it's in the sidewalk, sidewalk back or continue to build it. You know, they, there, there's some stuff that I have on my list. I, I know a lot of people complained. I don't know if you guys have gotten it about the school street, the, the stone wall being too tall. And it is, it wasn't built to spec, these entrances, not built to the spec. But aside from that, most of the other things are just stuff that's not complete yet. But since we're on the subject of DOT two, T, DOT two, DOT, I do want to say that, um, that accelerate project, the bridge project, I don't know if anyone else, but it went, it has gone. It's been great. I think they've been very good with the notifications. They've been great with, um, I haven't had any complaints come to, come to our department about, um, you know, any, any of the residents not knowing what was going on or having too much noise or, so they seem to have worked with the people who live near these places and, um, at least, because usually we get complaints even before you guys. So, uh, since I haven't gotten any, I, it doesn't mean it didn't happen and they didn't reroute this time. But generally, um, I, that's been, it seems like a very successful project. And I, I just, I just want to say that DOT is, we've worked with them for several other things and they've always been very good to this town. So, um, and I do think that that new bridge is, that all of them are going to solve the pigeon poop problem that we have on the sidewalk. Because there's not a lot of places for them to roost anymore. So I get a lot of complaints about that. And that's really something that's, you know, you go and you can pressure wash it once and it's just back the next day. So that'll be nice to be done with that. Let's see, so. Uh, we talked about Northborough Road a little bit. So, because this is really more of an update, the Northborough Road project or not, really, I wish it was a project already. That crossing, that stream, only because the cost right now, um, when that started, our, our crew basically has changed quite a bit, who we have and, and what we have for skill sets. Also just, um, equipment, the, the laws, the, the stream crossing, all that, a lot of things have changed since that originally, we just plated that pole. And what I want to, what I'm looking at, and I, I don't even know if it's something that we want to do or not, but I am just looking to see what feasibility is of turning that, taking that culvert out, making it a stream, having two dead end roads. You know, we'd have to obviously, I don't know what work would be involved in actually making sure that, you know, we didn't have someone drive into the stream. We do have electric poles down that road. People do, there's at least one house on, on Main Street that gets power from that road. But there is access still for the electric, mass electric trucks. And it basically will be something worth presenting to you, once we have costs for having contractors come in, put that in, because we will have to get money for that, or having contractors come in and turn it into a stream bed. And a lot of it has to do with, um, you know, the diversion, pumping, pumping it to get it around, also working in wetlands. There's, there's just, there's a lot to that that we won't be able to handle, um, you know, that our crew. So that's something that we'll be, I'll be back with at some point and hopefully we'll be able to maybe fund it at special town meeting, but if not, um, I haven't had complaints. I don't know what you guys have had for, about the road being closed. You know, it, it's, it's just a cut through road, so it's not, it's not a bad workaround in general. So hopefully, um, if we, if we don't, if there's no decision by special town meeting, which is in November, right? Oh, so that warrants closing soon? Yeah. Oh, you're open tonight, but it closes up early October?
Yes.
Yes. So maybe we have to go to annual town meeting for that. But again, it's, it's fairly stabilized and we, you know, for the, for, for right now, I don't want anyone driving over it because the, the, it's collapsed enough that the plate has sunk, which means the edges on either side of the, um, of the culvert are actually starting to keep into the culvert. So that's, it's secure at this point. I'm not concerned about people getting hurt on it. The Newton Street water main.
Karen can leave before. I think everybody's got something to say about that. Let's start with.
I actually don't object to making it to Rose there, but it would be great if we could, as part of that process, consider having a footbridge across there, pedestrian, bike, et cetera, access across there. So you at least have that to open as a path, a trail, bike route, et cetera.
Yeah, that actually, one thing we were thinking, because it's in our complete streets plan, to make that a one way so that we could, because we do have, um, there's all those trails in that area. So, um, one of the things too, is that if we could have parking for the trails on either side, and then, as you said, like some sort of issue is a great idea.
Yeah, I, I will follow up on that. I, is, is it your plan to do a couple of different proposals for what the cost would be? In other words, I, believe me, I've used that road as a cut through a lot. But it's not that much of an inconvenience to continue down Route 30 and take a right. And, um, I mean, if there's a significant cost difference, it just seems to me that what Mr. Stivers is talking about, which is basically, I don't even know if the, the short part of it, you'd have to be a dead end road. It could just be, you could turn it into a little mall parking area type thing to serve Chestnut Hill. Because there's no, are there any residences at all? There's one down at the end, right? It's just the one down at the end. And I, I, I'd like to think that it wouldn't be too much of an inconvenience for them if basically they, they would always have to go again. They wouldn't be able to access it immediately off of Route 30.
Might appreciate a quieter road.
Maybe, maybe well. But is it your plan to look at the, at, at, at what a couple of different costs would be for the road?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then just going back to the Main Street, Ms. Rosenbloom asked a question a couple of weeks ago about the crosswalks. They're not done, are they? Or, or are, all right, there's a smile on your face. Obviously you're aware of this.
Yeah, they, they are not done. Um, we've only been painting them just the regular white stripe, but we are putting, um, they still have to have that brick added in.
I'm all done. Thank you.
Great. Andrew, we'll go to you. Anything on either of the, or Main Street and or Northborough Road?
No.
That was easy. Chelsea? Okay, so my, my questions were similar to, to Marty's is to, you know, where, what were we going to be looking at? And where we, we're going to be going cost wise on those. So go ahead and move on.
Okay, um, so I think I was running Newton Street. So Newton Street, um, you just wanted an update on the water main on that. We're in design on that project. We did have a contract for the replacement of the water main on Route nine. And there's still about $900,000 left in that article. And that, that was borrowed, that, that money. So it's still there. So, um, we're looking at being able to reallocate it to, to water projects, whether, you know, it all goes to Newton Street or if we, you know, how, how we do it. But that's, look, we're looking at hoping, hoping to be able to use, reallocate that this fall so that we could bid the project as soon as the, um, the, the spec is complete.
Okay, any, go ahead, Marty.
Um, were you here when we were talking about the consultant with the accountants? Okay. One of the, one of the ARPA buckets, Mr. Purple, correct me if I'm wrong, is water. So I, I would, I would encourage you to reach out, because I hear you in terms of there, there being a, um, some money from a previous article. But by the same token, um, that might be a project that fit into, to ARPA as well. I mean, there, again, there's going to be, you know, money is fungible and a lot of it is going to be moving around in terms of what projects are best suited. But that's also worth a conversation with them and then the consultant about whether or not that's a potential source for funding that project as well. It just strikes me.
We did, Mr. Purple had asked for a list of, of items that we might want to, I think for, for Representative DiPa, maybe? And, and that, that was one of them, because it seems like water is one of the ones, and wastewater, which we don't have.
Before we move on from that, is there any other? Chelsea, Chelsea, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen. Um, just a quick question. What, what's the timing on the study being? what's the timing on the study being done um, for Newton Street, because there were a few options, I think, that we're gonna come out of the study on we, we didn't know exactly what needed to be done, right, so we'll have to make a decision um, on which route we're gonna go, and do you know the timing of when that would um, be ready?
Um, so, it's in design and I, it's um, basically what they're gonna do, the, the design will will be dictated through what they, what, what they find in the field. Um, but I, I don't think there's necessarily a lot of options, once, once it's determined, okay, yeah, this, you know, based on flow tests, this is what we're gonna have to do. Um, so I, I don't think there'll be a lot of decisions about that, then it'll just be a, all right, this is what we're gonna have to do, and then how, how, how do we want to fund it? Oh, timeline, so it should, should be um, I, I believe it'll be late fall, that we should be done with that.
So if, if we um, would we reallocate the nine hundred thousand? Or a piece, know that number of what needs to be reallocated, um, and would that need to be done through town meeting?
I believe so, I don't know if Mr. Purple's answering that, but um, my understanding is yes, it does, um, and since there's all nine hundred thousand and it, it's all part of the enterprise fund at this point, I I think um, what we've done in the past is we've, we've kind of allocated it to a project that the selectmen have the authority to vote to use it on, so that we can, right, so that we can kind of bring it in, into an article that the selectmen can make a decision on later. Done that before, doesn't, can't do it anymore, it looks like, from your face.
So it needs to be, it, 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 it needs to be assigned to a project of um, similar bonding term. And from the same source, you know, so the same funding source, so we need to keep the money within the enterprise fund, so that would work, and it would just be something, um, to Ms. Malinowski's point, that we would need to um, make sure that Mr. Ballantyne is comfortable with assigning the project to. But I, I think that, I think that that would, that would work, so I'm not sure if that's something we'd want to to do at this fall town meeting, or something we'd want to wait until uh, the spring.
Let me ask a question on that then, so based on the timeframe, if we're not gonna get the study back until late fall, isn't there some, how would we make that fit for a fall, a November first town meeting? I mean, I'm assuming late fall to me is mid-October, maybe later?
Technically, fall goes to December twenty first, so, but, but no, I, I believe we're talking November.
So it's a moot point.
Moot point, yeah. Sam. One second, Chelsea, I'll come back, um, you probably already answered this, obviously, I think with having to go to town meeting to reallocate the funds, we would be looking at next year at some time, at some point to do the project? Is that fair?
Yes, um, if we have funding, we, we can start it, so, and whether it's from ARPA or whatever, once we have that spec.
All right, thank you, Chelsea. Okay, now you're good, okay, go ahead Karen, I guess, continue on.
Sorry, um, all right, uh, let's see, skipping that. All right, so now we're kind of into the combined downtown project, is, is that okay, start, all right. So, the reason, it's this kind of, just everything turns into this, so um we, we bid that project, um, if you guys remember, we had share street, shared spaces grant, we had two hundred ninety thousand dollars, and um, we bid that one time as just fixing the intersection of um, St. Mark's Street and um, eighty-five. When we did that, we got lousy pricing, we rebid it, we changed the scope of the work, we got lousy pricing again. And so we bid it as part of a bigger project, and now we got good pricing. All in all, we can use that to, we actually, we did really well on this, we had expected as a two point seven million dollar project, we came in at like two point four to, uh, little, little more than two point four, maybe almost two point five, but um, so we've got the two hundred ninety thousand dollars, so that shared streets money, we, I did get an extension to use it, I got the extension till December thirty first. Um, so it was written in the spec that that, the work that that's paying for has to be done by December thirty first this year. Um, we already have that money in-house, like, it's in, somehow in our hands. Not my hands, but it is in our hands to be spent, um, so that's good. Um, so the downtown project, um we call it downtown various streets because it's a little more descriptive. Um we all know we wanted to finish the tip project, right, and continue it through downtown, but we couldn't do it based on some of the um some of the layout down there. Um, we're basically almost taking the Main Street project, the tip, and we're adding we're almost like taking roots off it, so we're, we're heading south a little bit with sidewalk to get us to the, you know, to fix the sidewalk all the way down to the northern entrance of the cemetery. Um, so that'll get us in front of the senior center and that little piece that's just um, that we're, from where the um, the tip project ended. On the north side, um, actually, we'll skip that for a second, then we get the downtown, we're gonna put the sidewalk down on Newton Street, which we had talked about. Um and that'll get us to the medical center, and so it helps the medical center people who do, I do see uptown a lot, um, or downtown, not really uptown, downtown a lot, um you know, and they walk there, so that gives them some safe walking, um, and it's starting to actually this project pulls together a bunch of areas in town that, that um where there is downtown and, and things to go to and places to walk. Um, that the tip already started. Um, it also, it takes that Deerfoot Road and Flag Road intersection, that was a long, long ago talked about, that we've always been wanting to bid with this downtown, um, with the downtown, and it's just, we haven't bid a big project since the tip, like, the tip happened and it was sort of, let's sit and see how the town can handle a project this big, in turn, happening through like our main center, um, so it includes the work on that, and um and then, this is, then we had the alternatives, right, so the first alternative to this, and I just found out that I messed this up, um, so we had planned on originally, we're taking um from twenty-one Highland Street, from Recreation um, building, we were taking part of that playground and moving it to the intersection. Um I found out that we're not doing that now, so I did talk to the people today, I talked to the contractor, and I talked to the people that they had, were using as their sub to do that work, and um and based on the money we have, we can um I'll be able to work with Recreation to say, all right, based on this, these are the options we have for some sort of play, play area in the center of this, it's, it's about a sixty foot diameter circle um, that we have to use, so we'll be able to put, um, you know as, 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 a small um playground, right, playground equipment with some fall protection, um, more, kind of similar to what we have at the town hall now, that, that kind of layer, um, that ground. And we'll probably just not fill the entire circle, which was the original plan, with the, because we were gonna be reutilizing, we'll, we'll take some of the circle and, you know, we'll be able to put bark mulch and stuff in it. Um, if we can, if we approve that alternative. The spec was set so that that alternative would be more of a pass through, so that, because contractor would really rather do the more sidewalk, which is what our alternative, our second alternative was. So you had to do, we had to award all one, to award all two. Um, the second alternative takes us from that intersection and takes us north to the crossing, um, that's on Marlborough Road at St., um, at St. Mark's West Campus. Um, so all these sidewalks I'm talking about are in our complete streets plan, um, which was approved on April uh, twenty first this year by, by DOT, so we can put in for those, those projects now. Um, so we, we can pick some of those, we can hold off, we can pick an, an, add more sidewalk somewhere else, um, that's, that's all fine. Um, so, based on if we award the whole project and um I did not get the bid tab in originally, um, it is in there, it is up in there now, but if you look, um our contractor, we did pretty well, they, they left about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the table, which is actually quite good, um for us, and they're, they're within what we had expected our, our costs to be, um. We've had the contractor, because they're the ones who did Main Street, um, by chance, um, and we've actually had Perkins as our contractor for a, a regular um, road maintenance project that, that we've done. Um to do this, we, to, to fund this project, we have money that was already allocated to Main Street with the idea that we were gonna have to do the downtown, so we have like, over a million dollars already allocated to that. Um, we have a hundred and eighty thousand allocated to Deerfoot Flag Intersection. Um, we have thirty almost in the, allocated to the St. Mark's intersection, and then we have the two hundred ninety thousand shared streets grant for that intersection also, um we have what's it called, mitigation money from Legacy Farms and from Stone Brook, um, and then we also have water main work, because there is water main on Route nine, uh, on Route thirty that we have to replace, and we have money still from the Main Street project for that. So we can use all of that money. Um, it's still, we still need to get more, so I would like to allocate um all the remaining chapter ninety money we have, which is nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And then, just, and we have available to us all of the road maintenance money, which is eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars right now. Um it gives us more than we need, but it's just, for now, if we, we don't have to, with the road maintenance funds, we don't actually have to determine how much is gonna come out of that. Um, it's just what, what we need to use, we will end up using. Um so, again, it, it, I mean, no one's comfortable with the idea that it takes away a lot of our money, but if we do apply for some grant money, where we have safe routes to school, where you can get up to, where you can get quite a bit of money, I'm just not sure, because we're not a, um we don't fall into a lot of the categories that they have for that, which are um not under, um, underprivileged towns, but they call it something else, so we, we have some we won't score as high as a, um, as a more densely populated urban center would. However, we could, I, I believe we get some money, we also can get the complete streets money. Um, up to four hundred thousand for that, if we did that, that, that just minimizes how much we have to take out of road maintenance. Um so that's basically the ask, so it's huge ask, I know, it's to, is to vote to use those chapter ninety funds on it, on, on the project, to award the bid, and then to also um give us the authority to look into complete streams and uh, um, safe routes to school grants, so that we can offset any of the um, road maintenance.
Okay, I, I have a bunch of questions, I'm sure everybody does, so we'll just uh, go down the line, we'll start with Andrew.
I'm actually gonna wait until uh, um, others go, I'm, I'm okay for now, thanks.
Okay, Chelsea?
Thanks Karen, um so, you're, if we just went with the, without the bid alternates, I'll get into it in a second, um, and we went with the two, four the low bid, that, right now, if you take all of your road maintenance altogether, chapter ninety road maintenance, um, the, the article that we do every year, and then all of the other um, items that have been allocated, what, we would have a million dollars left over, is that right?
Yes, I think so, if I did math quick in my head.
So, so, we would still be, so let's say that you use all your chapter ninety money, you would still have the eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand in the road maintenance articles from twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. Sorry, whatever role has been rolling over, you'd still have the eight fifty-eight, and then if we if we were able to secure, let's say, the max of the eight hundred thousand dollars in grants, then you wouldn't have to use all the chapter Monday, chapter ninety money, um, of the nine twenty-four. Okay, so let's say that doesn't happen, and that we are left with the million dollars if we go with the low bid. Um, is that taking, is that taking anything away from your plan for the next five years of roads, because we obviously use road maintenance to maintain regular roads, and I just want to make sure that we're not pushing something off that we shouldn't be, um, by using a lot of these funds.
Okay, very complicated question, um so, yeah, right, I mean, I can think of a million dollars worth of work we could do right now in town, absolutely, um on the other, on the other hand, um because of the fact that we can use some safe routes to school and we can use the other money, um, if we, if we can get it, which granted, it's, it's a if, um, but where we have a good bid and we have, we can do that sidewalk extending, um, it's and it's only three hundred thousand dollars really worth, that, that, that extra, that extra the, the, the two alternatives, right, it only adds in um, three hundred thousand, I think, three hundred and thirty-three, is that right? Um, or it might be, it might be, oh, eight, four hundred, so, um because of the fact that it, it makes the project better, my, my request is more so that we can make one big holistic project and really kind of get this network going in our, um in our downtown with the idea that, um next year, because we really, we wouldn't, we're not gonna bid something right now for, even if we had that million right now, I'm not gonna bid a, a bid this year, because it'll really happen next year anyway, um, that, th- those roads they're, they're not gonna get done now anyway, so at next, next spring, um, we'll know what we have left for money, and then we can, I, I could prioritize out of those streets that I really see the issues with, I could prioritize which ones we were gonna do. That, but it's all up to you guys, obviously.
Okay, so I'm gonna just ask my two other questions, so I don't have to flip back and forth. Um, but what is, would you anticipate that you would need to increase the FY twenty-three road maintenance article higher than three hundred and twenty-five thousand? So that's question number one, my second piece is, I am not in favor of doing a playground moved, new, anything in that location, we just got that ADA report that shows how much money we need to spend on fixing the current playgrounds that we have, we have the tot lot, it's a small structure, I don't think we need another small structure less than a fourth of a mile away on a main road, and if, if we were to go on a main road, I would say that we need to do fencing, because that just makes me really nervous. So I am not, um, I'm, I'm not in favor of the bid alternative at all, which I think you can correct me if I'm wrong, then makes me not in favor of the bid alt two, because you have to do the bid alt one to get the bid alt two, so those are my two questions.
Understood? Did that help?
I will say, before I move on, Chelsea, that was one of, one of the, 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 couple of your questions were the same, but on the playground, I thought when we had initially discussed the playgrounds, we had talked about not doing a playground because of the, the we were looking at potentially the south side of town and what may or may not have been done there, and because there is a playground behind the townhouse and the close proximity to it, um, I thought we had talked about, and I could be completely wrong, but I thought we had talked about putting benches in there and making it more of a a picnic type, or, you know, just in, in a gathering spot in town, and I could be completely wrong on that, um I'll just say that, and you can either respond Karen, or I'll just move on to the rest of the board, and everybody can recollect you know, that conversation that we did have, so, okay, do you want to respond, or? Okay. I know we talked about the playground and the concerns being so close to the townhouse, and I thought we weren't. Again, I can go back and look at minutes, and again, I I I'll I'll just leave it at that. So we'll move on, and Marty, we'll go to you next.
Karen, I'll follow up on that very quickly. Let's assume that the playground is out. What then would that relocated park area look like? Is it, is it along the lines of what Lisa described, and would that, could that be done under the existing bid?
Yes, I believe we can. I think we could almost do almost like a gazebo type of thing, if it sounds like you're looking at or some sort of small. But I do think as long as we can get it into that same price range and we award it as a we award both alternatives, that 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 will work.
Sorry, just logistics of this. So, all right, so let's assume that that is done. I understand that the the global approach, but what that would mean, now I'm focusing on the north of of Route thirty along eighty-five. So what that would look like is is sidewalks would extend up to the reconfigured intersection, is that right? Without getting to all the second part of the alternative. Okay. And the second part of the alternative, which is then extending sidewalks farther up, that would add another four hundred thousand? In terms of the, what do you call it? The alternative two or the second part of the alternative?
So it there, I think there's eighty thousand for that, the little inner, like the the park area, and then it's three hundred thousand or, you know, so it's like three twenty and eighty for the next piece of sidewalk, because it does include drainage and some some other work, but it's basically for sidewalk.
Can I jump in and ask one quick question?
Oh.
Based on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the drainage that you're talking about isn't the drainage issue because that's going to be moved, the road, so it is nothing to do with the flooding piece we have now, just to be clear.
Correct. So the reconfiguration of the intersection will fix that flooding, however, adding the sidewalks actually does some other work with their St. Mark's parking and the basically the license and the easement that we are trying to get between us and them.
Are you also, Lisa?
I am, thank you.
Okay, all right. So I think I understand now what the what the options are north of Route thirty on eighty-five. South of Route thirty on eighty-five. Right now, we've got a sidewalk that goes down to Woodward, basically, to the Woodward crossover. And this would extend it on the west side of eighty-five going along the cemetery, where there's kind of a beat-up sidewalk right now. Okay, and it would go down to the drive-in, the main drive-in entrance to the rural cemetery, is that the plan?
Yeah, the the northern.
Okay, and so what would happen south of Route thirty is that is that the paving would continue down to public safety? Okay, and the sidewalk would extend to the entrance to the rural cemetery, okay? The the plan is currently constituted would not include a crossover and any sort of foot access to the Public Safety Building. Okay. And that, so that's what that's what would be covered south of Route thirty and eighty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Now let's go to east of the end of the current Main Street project. Would this project address everything that we've talked about with respect to the rail line? And ADA access and the like? Go ahead.
Okay, no, unfortunately, so we CSX has to bid their own work on their right-of-way, so they they're bidding, they're they're designing, and then which, you know, you guys have approved paying there for the design, and then they're going to bid their own crossing, so we'll be able to put our pipes under, but the actual work for the crossing and the like the lighting and the alarms and the gates and everything, that's all CSX has to do. So we basically will bring the bring the the sidewalk to them, and then they have to complete everything. Actually, it'd be, once they're crossing it, we were able to get into the right, their right-of-way a little bit with it, but then they're going to continue it and it's their construction there.
Okay, so that that is a both a decision and a funding question for farther down the line.
Unfortunately, yes, because that's that's something that we can't. We have on our complete streets list, but we actually can't use we can't use it if CSX, we can't pay CSX with that, we have to pay a contractor with it, but we have to pay CSX directly to do this work, so it's it's something that we wanted to put on that so that it was clear that we were interested in in getting this project done, even like that crossing fixed, even though we might not be able to use complete streets money for it, it still puts it out there that the legislature or the state sees that, oh, this crossing's a problem for them.
Okay, and the the, so the sidewalk, so that, so what would be done right in front of the of South Road House of Pizza where the project currently ends? So both both sides of the street sidewalks extending right to the the corner heading down Route thirty, the addition? Okay, and then going left up Newton Street to the Medical Center? Okay, and that's everything that would be done east of the current end of the Main Street project? Okay. How about, so I'm I'm assuming by by elimination that that because currently, you know, at at Lattisquama and and school, there's a slight extension of the Main Street project up those two streets. For now, those would be untouched. Okay. And how about on the flip side of of is it St. Mark's Street? I'm not even sure of the one, I walk it a million times, but that street right there, St. Mark's Street, would that be paved or impacted or at all by this?
It actually paves up further than it normally would because the intersection is moving south, so they will pave into, it does get paved up probably just to the cemetery wall on Main Street, on St. Mark's Street, so just the old, the old burial ground wall.
Okay, those are my questions. Now just a few comments based on all that. One of the, one of the things that I found really interesting at this past town meeting was, I thought a sort of a telling comment, I guess, I think it was Mr. Hamilton, who talked about the 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 CPA CPC funding going to the the church, the tower, and remarked on how much money has been spent on Main Street. And so one of and believe me, I think all of the, all of this is 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 necessary, appropriate, and I think makes all the sense in the world. I'm just, I'm 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 trying to fit it into it it's all, all of this is going towards, again, improving an area that needs to be improved, but it's all Main Street, and I just I don't not support it because of that, but I'm very mindful of that. And so I guess at least from my perspective, I don't know where this is going to go from the rest of the board. Again, I'm I'm I don't think I'm supportive of extending past the little park. I just, I I think that's, you know, there's 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 money coming down the road, you know, relatively shortly, I think, in terms of infrastructure, infrastructure. And I think I'm I'm willing to take the risk that that money is going to be able to address that. I think the other things are important to be done. I I think that it's also important, though, to to make it clear that that we are not going to be entirely Main Street centric on, you know, the the the, I think it's one point one million that would be left in road maintenance money, and make it pretty clear that honestly, I don't know if you make it in terms of priority, but certainly a focus that that beyond the Main Street area that issues are going to be are going to be addressed. The second thing I'll say is that there is, doesn't mean we're going to get it, but there's a ton of money coming in some form of an infrastructure bill from the federal government. And it would be interesting to me to hear, I guess, so I guess my question is, what's the timetable on being able, on being required to act on this? In other words, I I know you want an answer tonight, but how quickly do you need an answer?
Because because of the fact that we need to we we need to use the two hundred and ninety thousand or lose it by the end of the year, we need, we need to get moving on that, so if we can award with the idea that this is the money we're going to use, whether or not, because we can't always call you or send to DOT and say, we actually want to not allocate that money to the chap, that Chapter ninety money anymore, we we have a new funding source, and they'll they'll let us do that. But if we we don't want to lose that two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to fix it, because we do know we need to fix that intersection, that huge puddle. So if we vote that tonight, then we can get, remember, it's already mid-August, we'll have a contract in place September, and you you're, we're really short on a on a construction season at that point, and that intersection has to be dealt with in order to not lose that money. And just to
No, that's that's fine, and and that's fine, and and
Marty, your picture's off.
Oh, what am I doing? I'm just, I I gotta, I'm like, I don't know. I I let my hands linger over these things. The one thing I forgot was obviously there there is some money that isn't Main Street centric because it's going to the flag Deerfoot area, so I I neglected to mention that. The, I guess the final thing is, again, I I I think that 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 the, I think the concept here is a very good one. Again, I am other than that extension, I'm supportive of this. I think it's a very good idea. I think that that it it does some terrific things for downtown. You know, again, we've talked a lot about about our, about the golf course. This goes a ways towards, you know, maybe even ultimately connecting the golf course, so you can can walk to it, and and I know Mr. Lit is gonna is gonna burn our ears later on in public comment about about the need to get to the, you know, public foot access to the, from an ADA perspective to the Public Safety Building, and that's that's a, that's a big project that we have to be looking at ADA generally. Is it, if we approve this tonight in whatever form, there remains flexibility for both from a grant perspective and a additional federal infrastructure perspective to tap those monies to, again, money's fungible. So, yeah, we tap it for this, but it's, it means it's not available for that. I guess my, I guess my, where I come down is, I think this is, this is a, an important completion of an initiative that we started that ties Main Street with the other areas of the town, and I think it makes an awful lot of sense. So that's my my overall comment on the thing, except for that that one extension. So I guess I'll leave it at that from for my comments.
Thank you. And Karen, I'm I'm just going to piggyback on something Marty said because I completely agree with you on the extension. Is because monies have been allocated three hundred and twenty thousand dollars roughly towards that, is there any way that we could work with the contractor and utilize that on some other problem issues we may have on sidewalks? I know I've gotten a call, some calls on a couple of them that people are concerned about tripping hazards and tree roots have grown under and it's lifted and kids have fallen. Is there any opportunity to be able to maybe use some of this three hundred and twenty thousand? And as Marty said, this seems to be, we don't want people to think it's just focused on the downtown, but the sidewalks in particular, I'm talking about, are actually on the south side of town. And I've seen pictures have been sent to me, and literally, it's it's, you have to go up and over on a bike to, because of the tree roots and everything. So is there the opportunity, do you think, to maybe, again, the contractor's still getting their contract, but be able to use this portion still on sidewalks, but on just some of the problem areas, not looking to redo a whole neighborhood? But I'm sure you've gotten calls too of different spots, different spot projects of of being able to address a few of these problem areas.
If it's a small problem area, which I haven't had a small problem area come to me yet, we we can fix that ourselves. As far as reallocating that that money to it or kind of trying to have the contractor use that, based on the percentage of the contract that it is, I don't, I don't think you can just move it. You just have to not award it, which is fine, and then we could rebid, you know, we we could use this money that's left over, and we could bid a bid a road project. Just as a quick aside, just as, because we're talking about roads. So we had talked about, you know, we we had the shovel ready, and you guys, the board, sorry, not you guys, the board gave us, gave permission to put Chapter ninety towards survey work, right? And we did survey on on Framingham Road, and we're looking at Eagle Bridge and that intersection, other pieces of we actually, we had, we had three projects that we did. One of them was the intersection with Main Street, I mean, with St. Mark's Street and eighty-five. So based on that, we're actually looking at taking the Framingham Road piece and trying to put that on the tip as a tip project, because there shouldn't be any there, there's not, you you can put a sidewalk and everything on there or or a side pathway, but there's no, there's no easements really are going to be required on that. We have a huge right-of-way there. And that's, that's a piece that actually is a very neglected piece of the town, right? Because it's a very busy road, but it's it's very neglected. So in terms of, we we don't do a lot because it's just big and wide, right? So the water kind of doesn't sit anywhere too much for us or anything. So we are allocating money to that area to do some some work, and that would be hopefully on the state or or federal cost. And then other spots that we really are looking at that a lot of, a lot of the work that we need to do is so much larger than just pave the road, unfortunately. Like, we really need to look at some of these roads that people, people are upset about the traffic on them, they're upset about not feeling safe walking on them, and the real solution is put drainage in, put a sidewalk in, and make it a road that's walkable, right? You don't, you can't, you can't make a road more walkable by stopping traffic from going on it unless you put barriers on either end, right? We, you just stop traffic, period, or you make it safer to walk on by building a sidewalk and and or a lane to to ride your bike in. So we really, those projects, we really need to talk about. As far as the roots growing through, we have a neighborhood that it's happening in every single tree, and the problem is, is it's a cul-de-sac neighborhood. And a cul-de-sac neighborhood is a lot different to walk on and walk around, and I'm not belittling people who live in a cul-de-sac at all, I I mean, there's, but it's safer to walk on that road than it is to walk a Marlboro Road. I'm not advocating either way for, I mean, we should put a sidewalk down Marlboro Road, we should eventually connect that, we should, you know, we need to look at a lot of these sections, the East Main Street sidewalk is lousy, it needs to be fixed, right? Like, all these neighbor, anything that connects, we should be looking at pedestrians being able to use that as a connection. You know, when you're in a cul-de-sac and you're going to walk the end and be in a circle, it's not as important, which is why the planning board actually will sometimes say, okay, you don't have to build that, give us the money towards it, which is what we get from Stone Brook. So it's just a just an aside, like, some of the projects, there's roads that I'd love to pave, but I hate to pave because I know I need to put drainage and a sidewalk there. So you'll be seeing those at some point, but they they're probably going to be bigger projects that ultimately end up, I think, through capital, because capital seems to be kind of hammering on that a little bit.
Okay, thank you. I think, you know, so just one one further follow-up, and then Sam, I'll go to you next. So if Um, so if we didn't do the extension, how will that affect, will it affect other parts of the bid? Um, or we can just, because it's an, an, an add-all, we can just take pieces or part of it off? Okay, okay. Go ahead, Sam. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, I guess my primary question was, uh, the one that Chelsea started with a while back in the sense of, um, are we somehow jeopardizing our ability to do normal road maintenance by reallocating this money here in terms of the overall cost of this? And I guess, um, you know, I, I think that all of these, uh, parts of the project, I think are worthwhile and, uh, important to do. Uh, the north extension piece that we're talking about was last on my priority list. I wouldn't mind seeing that done certainly, but that, I, I think that's something that we could hold on. I continue to believe that there are gonna be a variety of sources of, uh, federal funding for a lot of this stuff going forward. And it's a bit of a gamble, but I think it's a fairly safe one. At this point, particularly as we get more consulting help to find some of this money, I think we're much more likely to be able to find funding for some of these things. So I guess I'm, uh, again, personally willing to take a chance that we'll be able to fill in some of this and not jeopardize our, our ongoing road maintenance work, because I think there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done there certainly. So, uh, I guess I'm comfortable with proceeding with this. As we talked about, with the exception of the north extension, St. Mark's Street. Thanks.
Thank you, Sam. Andrew, we'll come back to you.
And Karen, my question is also, um, kinda goes back to Chelsea's first question about spending all this money. Um, to what extent does it undercut your ability to do bigger projects in the future? And the one that came to mind is, um, you know, the, the condition of Route 85 south of Route 9, um, down to Southville Road, you know, that's, that's an area of sidewalk where you see people walking quite frequently and the sidewalks are deteriorating. Is there a long-term plan for um, repaving and improving the sidewalks on the part of 85, on Corderville Road, 85 south of Cemetery towards, um, going all the way down to the train station?
That should be an easy one, Karen.
Um, yes, there is. Uh, so we do have a Corderville Road project that we have, um, started. Um, we do have survey complete. We have a preliminary design. It's up on our website. Um, that project, we're actually looking at doing a funding at a town meeting, like an article that funds it. Um, more with the idea that, okay, we'll get complete streets. We get some sidewalk, $400,000 maybe with sidewalk work. And then, um, again, I don't know how all the, this ARPA money or whatever, how it works, if it works for roads, if it's not gonna work for roads, but, um, but that was actually when they built, when they did, redid the Corderville Road Bridge, they made sure that they, they lined up where they wanted the sidewalk with, where, with where we were putting our sidewalk. Um, and that should take us all the way down to the train station. That, that's, that's what the-
Okay, what, what-
And the idea is, is that hopefully it'll, it's gonna be funded through the town or it'll be, you know, through several little grants.
Is that something that's expected for the annual town meeting 2022 or? Thank you.
That was it? Let me check. Was that it, Andrew? Okay, go ahead, Marty.
So I guess, and this is just to put a finer point on, on, on what I was talking about earlier. And you did a, you did a nice job of, with these bullet points and the like. But i- if we don't go forward with this, with this omnibus bid that you put together, which gives, you've gotten us a great price, which wraps in the $300,000 290 that we got for the, um, for the work north of Route 30. Um, uh, the basic price tag is, I'm just doing my quick math, is about $725,000. Because these funding sources add up to the, the amount you've got, which is just, just, um, south of 1.8 million dollars. So those funding sources exist. So what we're talking about is not doing pretty much all of this work and starting over, um, and figuring out how to address it, or spending $725,000 without having to tap the road maintenance fund. Um, because it would be able to come out of chapter 90, we'd be, so basically what you're asking us to do is to fund $725,000 of, of new funding to address all of these items that you've got listed. Is that the, all right, that's the way I'm looking at it. Okay, I think that's the, cause there's so many disparate things going on, but really that's, we're talking about a, a huge project where there are buckets of funding that, that, that we've been able to get from the state that we, the town has previously allocated. And to do this omnibus project, which rolls in an awful lot of work, we're asking for an additional $725,000 that doesn't tap our road maintenance funding at all. Um, okay, got it.
Can I just ask a question based on that then?
Yep.
So if we don't do the add-ons, then that 725 is actually lower.
No, the 7.25, the 7.25 included.
Sorry, Chelsea, go ahead.
Um, so Karen, if we did the 2.4 million, and I agree with Marty's math on the 725 additional that you would be asking us to allocate tonight, does that impact your 325 road maintenance article for FY '23?
Um, so I remember when we met, was it two years ago? We did the 325 for, for three years, right? So my intention has always been that, oh, I'm on year four, I'm gonna be able to ask for a little more. Um, but that's, um, I know 325 is sort of where we, we were trying to be comfortable at, but, um, it's just, the costs have gone up because, and, and if this ARPA funding really does start doing road work, it's gonna shoot our prices up again, right? Our, the cost of, um, oil's gone up. Um, so that does affect us in, in a certain percentage of, of the cost of the asphalt. Um, so I would be asking for more this year anyway, not more just because I know those costs are going up, but I don't know what they're gonna be. So I would most likely just be trying to get 350 or four, probably four, but with the idea that you're not gonna give me four, but, um, but that's, yes, I, I, my intention was to ask for more either way, not for 325 this year.
Are you asked that, Chelsea? Okay, so I guess the asked from us is, is threefold tonight. First, it is to award the various streets project base, taking out the alternatives to the low bidder, E. H. Perkins of 560 Main Street, P.O. Box 752 Hudson, Mass. 0177, 01749. It's gonna be a virus of code. So, uh, based on that, do we have a motion to award that bid?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
I couldn't hear you, Lisa. You called on me? Aye.
Aye. And Ms. Brascio, aye. Thank you very much. That's part one. Part two is to vote to allocate the remaining unallocated funds from Southborough's 2020 Chapter 90 portionment and Southborough's 2021 and 2022 Chapter 90 portionment to the various streets project. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Malinowski?
So we don't actually, do we need to allocate all the funds or do we just need to allocate the difference between the 2.4 and the 1.7?
I, I think Chelsea's right. It's not gonna be the entire amount. What, what's the best way, Mark? The best way to frame that is, is uh, uh, cause I don't wanna, we, we could do the math, I suppose, but that, that math is gonna be fuzzy and like, um, up to the, um, a- as necessary for the full bid amount?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chelsea. I amended my motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Ms. Brascio, aye. Okay, thank you. And the last vote is to vote to pursue complete streets and SRTS grants proportions of various street projects. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Aye, second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
And Ms. Brascio, aye. Okay, Karen, I think that takes care of that piece.
You better, better look nice, Karen.
Do you have anything you wanted to?
I just wanted to check on the vote.
Okay, hold on one second. Go ahead, Mr.-
Just, just for the minutes, I just wanted to clarify the vote. If you can just repeat the vote that we took on the first piece for the awarding of the, the various streets, you know, did we, did we award?
We, we took out the alternate.
You took out the alternate?
And otherwise it was complete.
I just wanted to make sure it was correct in the minutes. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Karen, we'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, I could've done this one before too. This is easy. Well, actually, it's on consent. Do I need to talk about it? The, um, catch basin cleaning contract? Um, I don't need to, right?
I don't. Well, does any questions, if anyone has a question on the awarding? I see none, Karen, so just leave that under consent.
Okay, um, and I think is-
White Road?
Oh, White Road, thank you. Um, so I did look into the questions that had come up before, um, which was, can we do uh, um, heavy vehicle exclusion, commercial vehicle ex- exclusion? Oh, should've, I wrote it, should be CVE, HCVE, but, um, so, um, you can't do it for just one direction. Um, and Wes Bro pretty much had the same idea that I would have answered him to, which is, I am not gonna be the truck route for your, for your problem. Um, uh, cause I didn't, you know, his residents aren't gonna want them any more than our residents would. So, um, with that being said, um, there's still the option. You can put, you can put forward this, um, the report and send it to DOT, but you have to decide what you wanna use as an alternate route. Um, and again, eh, eh, just to be clear on what the, the alternate route is, basically you're sitting there and you're saying, I'm here and I need to get there at the other end of this road. So that's why it's end to end. Um, the easy one, obviously, which is not easy residential, but like the one that if, if you came upon this sign at the intersection of Deerfoot and Flag, you're gonna go down Deerfoot onto Clifford, right, Parkville, and then take nine back to the other end of Flag, right? Cause that's what we were trying to get is nine. To come the other way and you wanna get to Flag, right? And, and so you wanna get to the other end of Flag, you're either going that same route back, right? So you're coming, so you, you leave early, right? Leave, leave nine early to get to Route 30. Or you're gonna have to do the full turnaround, right? Um, uh, because, because we have to direct them, right? We have to tell them where they're gonna go. Doesn't mean people are really gonna use that route, but we have to give a route that people are gonna, or that we believe a truck would use, which is going to probably take the 495 Cloverleaf. It's gonna come back, it's gonna have to take 85. And then you're gonna go on Main Street, which is an excluded street. Right? Now, on the same instance, if you don't want to send trucks down Deerfoot Road, which, or Clifford Road, and, and the, the, you can set them Deerfoot whole way, but the end of Deerfoot, the end of, in Clifford, they're both right, they're, they're, they're not better suited for a truck than Flag Road is. We have the same problem at Pine Hill, so please don't think this is rare. Okay, Pine Hill actually has more traffic, is in, is a worse road for a truck and actually has much more truck traffic. But there is no, um, there, there actually is no way within our own town to get around Pine Hill Road, right? It's like, it's just based on the situation of it, how it's situated. But, um, so this, this isn't the first time this happens. Um, you, if you choose to, you can basically say, look, we want to, or you can try to exclude Deerfoot and Flag, but now you, you have to send them down an excluded route, which is Main Street to get to 85.
Let me ask a question. So you talked about sending them doing the Cloverleaf at 495 and then coming back to 85. Why wouldn't they do a Cloverleaf and go down Route 9 and go to where they're going to go? It seems to be that, that the trucks that are coming down Flag have missed some term somewhere else or where they're supposed to go. So I, in theory, I'm thinking, why wouldn't we just send them back down Route 9 to where they would wanna go? Why would they even have to come down to Main Street or come back down to Deerfoot or Flag? So I guess, okay, you, you-
Um, you, you, you're not wrong on, on two different ways. Basically, the, the idea is, is that you're on Main Street and you're trying to get to nine, or you're on nine and you're trying to get to Main Street. And so you're granted, there's that little piece of Deerfoot that, that throws you off because technically we're, we're talking about Flag Road, right? Excluding Flag. So you get to the intersection of Flag, you're trying to get to nine, or you, you're on nine and you wanna get to 30. Which, again, if you wanna get to 30, because then you wanna get to 85, uh, you know, 85 more like Marlboro and 85, so, you know, Sears Road, which, um, I believe if I look in the map, that might be excluded also. So, um, basically, I believe way back when they first, when they first said, talked about truck exclusions, I think, I think the idea that Southborough had was if you exclude Main Street, you're protecting all those other roads. Problem is, is that um, you've excluded Route 30, which is a huge connector road in the town, right? And most of our roads off of Route 30 are old car paths, you know, like, you know, farm, farm roads that have turned into roads, eh, um, which generally would sort of be protected, except for the fact that they do lead to somewhere, whereas a lot of our roads don't. And you can use Main Street to get to an excluded street because the street, it, that, that's attached to it because they're both excluded. Like, if you have a delivery on, um, Middle Road, you can use Main Street to get to Middle Road. Middle Road's excluded, Main Street's excluded. You have a delivery, you have to do that. Um, eh, eh, so it's, it's, um, the exclusions aren't as good. I, I mean, the goal is really to take the tractor trailers off the road, I believe. Um, and I have been talking to DOT. I asked them, could we put a sign up that said, um, you know, look, no tractor trailers, just no right turn, right at Flag? Um, and they can't do that unless it's actually excluded, but they are looking to see what they might be able to do to kind of encourage a different route for tractor trailer. Um, and that tends to be more maybe the way to handle it, cause our issue is a lot more global than one road. And, and that's really, you know, it's, it, you know, the network, the road network is really basically, you know, rivers, right? And you block one and more is going one different way and it, you know, or piping, right? So you shut, as you shut valves or squeeze valves, you've just created more pressure in a different area that might not be able to handle it either.
So picking back, pickybacking somewhat on that, would it be useful, cause again, I don't think anybody sitting here thinks it's okay for tractor trailers to go down Flag. I, 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 maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but as, as I, as I look at my members, I, I think we've been fairly clear on that. Would it be useful to try to find an alternative way to have a sit-down conversation with Mass DOT? Just, just a, a, a general, hey, we have a big issue here. You know, and again, I'm sure you've had some of these conversations already, but it's, it's nothing new, but sometimes adding a little bit of, you know, a member of the board, Mr. Purple, to a conversation, I don't know, maybe I'm naive. It, it, I think it, it does, could it present another opportunity? And again, I'm, I'm just open for exploring opportunities on things we can do. The answer is not to feed these vehicles down another Flag or Deerfoot. We're seeing that's happening now. I got some pictures again the other day of another tractor trailer that got stopped. And I think the traffic studies showed us, a lot of tractor trailers are coming down there. Have a good idea where they're going to and where they're trying to get back to. And I don't think it's cutting up to Main Street to go someplace else. Um, so I, I don't know, Karen. I, I am not an expert. This isn't my field, but we have a problem. We have a big problem. And before, I think, um, somebody's property gets more- somebody's property gets more damaged, or somebody actually gets hurt by, by one of these tractor trailers, we just need to find a solution. And I guess I'm asking you again, is, is a little more push from the board, is reaching out to Carolyn Dykemot even, to maybe get her involved in this, to, to, I just think there's an answer out there to some level, and we're just trying to find it. So that's just my thoughts.
If, if you're more on like the signage on Route 9, something like that, it, it might be helpful just to actually put an official request in that's official, not, hey, what about this sign, what about this sign? But can you put this sign up, but we, we're not going to exclude the road? I'm sure you could get the road excluded, but you've again, you, you would have had to say, all right, we're okay, but those trucks are going to now be on Main Street, which is an excluded road. And it, it does, it, it, it really in a way, and it, this, it, the network or what we, you know, whether we want to look into a more global issue of what we've got going on in town and, and look more globally at, where do we want to direct traffic? How do we want things to go? You know, we did a lot of work on Main Street. Do we feel that that's a safer road to walk on now because we have better sidewalks? Maybe are we better, or do we feel better about having trucks on that road? I don't know. Maybe not, right? Are we better, do we, I mean, we clearly have been throwing them down 85 left and right, because that's, we've not excluded that ever. We, we let them go, you know, 85, and then it turns into Framingham Road, like that, we've never tried to exclude that, and those are wide. And take a obviously a lot of trucks. So you know, is that, is, is that something that we need to do, is more, more of a full-on traffic study? I know at one point when we did talk originally about the Deerfoot exclusion, people were like, why can't we just make a bunch of one-way roads? And it needs to be, it, it needs to be a very globally looked at. You can't just say, oh, well, make that one way, and then suddenly all these other people are like, wait a minute, what happened to my neighborhood, right? But I, I, I mean, I don't have an answer. It's just, I'm posing the thought of if this is this big of an issue, which I, I do think it's an issue for people in town, I don't, don't get me wrong, but we need to look more what we do want to send out there and where we do want things to go, where we want to send those tractor trailers. And it might, it might mean we need to look, you know, look at some roads that are excluded and say, you know what, this, this, this one might, might be one of the safer ones to not have excluded.
One second, oh, sorry. I'm going to ask Oz just one quick question, and then I'll, I'll open it up to the board, but we, we talked a little bit about putting a sign. We are the keepers of the roads here in Southboro. Can we, to deter tractor trailers from going down there, put up a sign? Can we, can we create a fine? A thousand dollars, you know? If, if you go down the road, it's a thousand dollar fine for tractor trailers. Be specific, you know? I don't know if that's possible, but if I was a, if I was a tractor trailer driver and I'm trying to get somewhere, and I just don't feel like going up to whatever, and there's an, an opportunity or a chance that I could get a, a big fine that my company's not going to pay, I might think twice. I don't know if that's possible. That's just a thought. If you can answer that, then I'll, then I'll open it up to.
Sorry, sorry, I can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Okay, Mr. Healy, just. All right. We'll, Chelsea first.
We, we, we missed that whole thing. She was on mute.
I was on mute.
Karen.
Oh, Karen. Oh, okay, that was easy. Can you just re-answer the question about the fines? Briefly.
Was it just a question about the fines? Okay. I don't know that we can do that with the fines. I know we have put up our own signs else, on actually Flag that said, you know, tractor trailers, tough turn, or not appropriate road. I, I forget what it says, but it's, it's appropriate is not the word. But we do try to keep, we have, we can do our own signs of any kind. I just don't know that we can find people.
Okay, thank you. Chelsea, I'll come back to you then. Marty?
I guess just generally, I mean, Lisa, you're absolutely right. Nobody I'm not, I'm not sure how comfortable I am with cars driving on Flag Road. I mean, it's just, it, it is the idea that it's not appropriate for tractor trailers seems so obvious, but obviously, they're using it. But the last thing in the world, I, I, that I'm, I would be comfortable doing is saying, all right, in order to, 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 to relieve this burden on Flag Road, we're going to send it down other roads that are equally you know, problematic for a tractor trailer like Deerfoot or Clifford, or, or I'm not sure what the other relief roads would be. So the only I guess, if, if we are going to look at this globally, it just strikes me, we're going to have to invest some money in a traffic study to understand exactly if we block off the, this street from tractor trailers, where's the traffic going to go? You know, if we block off this street and that street, where is the traffic going to go? Because right now, there's, there's uncertainty. And I guess the other thing is, and I'm not sure, I suspect you can know this from a traffic study, but exactly where are those tractor trailers coming from? And where are they going to? I, I just think that's important to know. Because if they're, you know, if, if 75 or 80% of them are coming from one location, then, you know, it might be a lot easier to say, all right, this is the, this is the, you know, the, the ordeal you're going to have to go through to, to, to avoid going on our, you know, our roads that are not constituted for that sort of traffic. But I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable making that decision without knowing the two things. Number one, where the, where the traffic's coming from, and, but more importantly, if we, if we close off one pressure point, what is that going to mean for another pressure point? You know, the law of unintended consequences is a powerful one, and I'd like to, I'd like to reduce the unintended as much as possible and not, you know, declare victory because we've saved Flag Road and realized that we've created enormous problems for some other quiet little neighborhood. So I guess that's, that's my overall view.
I'm just, and to piggyback on that, one thing about, I know the, the elephant in the room is that a lot of people think it's Ken's, right? I will say that with them, they have been very good about they, they notify the drivers to, to make sure, because they think they can, you know, turn in a certain spot, they can't, to not use the, our, the Flag Road and to actually turn around. And, and I, I follow a lot of them. I end up on nine, following them in the, through the turnaround stuff, and, and and they're, you know, they're all headed into Ken's. The other thing is, is you know, you get your, you get your joyce delivered for, for, for the house you're building, they're coming on an 18-wheeler, right? The you, we have a lot of things that actually, you know, you're moving, the moving trucks often in 18-wheeler. And I'm amazed that they get, like, they got it up my parents' driveway. I was like, I can't, I can't, I don't know how they do it, right? So I think there was a total for those weeks, for those days that they did it, I think there were six, but I think it was three and three. I think they were coming from both directions. Like, it wasn't all coming from nine down because they missed their turn or anything. So it's just, it, it and, and you don't know if they wanted to get to Lovers, or they're trying to get to Lindbrook. They might very well have been like, you know, a truck carrying construction equipment or, or trees. And one thing with the exclusion that's important to note is that we're thinking, we're focusing tractor trailers, but the exclusion's actually for heavy commercial vehicles. And so it actually is, is like a, like one of the larger dump trucks, right? So it, it excludes a lot more than it, because it's not like a bridge, whereas by weight, it's actually just, this is, this, this, this truck and anything bigger can't come down, which is why you see so many trucks on excluded streets, because delivery trucks would be excluded, but they're not because they have deliveries on that road. So it's just, we're not just excluding tractor trailers, and I think that's 99% what we really want to do. It's just, just to be clear, that's, that's not what the commercial exclusion will do.
Well, I, I, I mean, honestly, I would want to get rid, with the other big trucks you've described, I would want to get rid of those too. So, but I understand that you can't, I mean, moving trucks and, you know, if construction is going, but I get that. But that's why, that's why I think a traffic study would be important to know exactly what these trucks are. You know, if it turns out, I don't think this is the case, but if it turned out that, that 90% of the, of the problematic trucks were trucks that are going to go through no matter what we do, because they're moving trucks, because they are related to construction, then you know, then it's a problem, but it's not really a problem, it's fixable. Unfortunately, but we don't know that. So.
Thanks. I, I like Lisa's idea of having a little more official conversation with MassDOT. I think that could be helpful. Also, it seems to me that we're not the only people in the world who've had this problem. I got to believe that there are traffic engineers out there who might have some ideas from other communities in terms of, how do you very selectively discourage trucks from these kinds of places? And I don't know, again, I don't, my guess is, if you have a conversation, somebody who's expert in this, who wouldn't charge you a hundred thousand dollars for a study, but just a conversation about it, are there ideas out there that people have found successful for some of this? Another thing that we've talked about in the past is considering making all or part of Flag Road one way. And so, for example, I don't know if it makes sense to make it one way from Blackthorn out to Route 9, maybe cut off part of it potentially. And anything we could do to, to cut down on a substantial portion of the truck traffic that we're trying to get at, I think would be an interesting thing to consider. So maybe there are other one-way options to think about that would not totally inconvenience the neighbors, but it's discourage the kind of traffic that we're talking about. So again, it seems to me that we need to keep thinking about solutions. I like Karen's suggestion that maybe the global view of what we're trying to do overall in town, assuming that what we have today is the best solution around town. My guess is that we don't have a lot of degrees of freedom at that today, but at least having somebody who's skilled at thinking about these kind of things, to take a look and say, if we, if we did it this way, we would relieve, you know, some pressure in other places, and not, again, make the problem worse for places that we're not having a problem today. So all those things seem to me to be worth trying to look at, and obviously, as quickly as we can. Those are my thoughts.
Do you want to comment on any of that, or just keep going? Okay. Ms. Melonowski?
And maybe I missed this, Karen, but were you saying that a potential alternate route could be that you use the Cloverleaf on 495, go back onto Route 9, go up 85, and then if Main Street was not excluded, then that could be an alternate route?
Yes.
So just my initial reaction to that is I think my biggest concern with Flag is that it feeds right into a school, potentially two schools, right? If you think of it as a campus. And I, I don't know how many kids walk, ride their bikes to school over there, because I'm not there yet, but I would imagine that there's some larger population that do do that, given that they're six to eighth graders, versus if we were to relook at Main Street with, with what all the work that we just did, I think I would, I would be open to looking at at taking the exclusion off of Main Street, because I think that there's less of a safety concern, unless I'm missing something, and maybe a study would, a traffic study would bring that to light. But I, just for, as a parent, I think that if my kid was walking along Main Street as a middle schooler, I think I'd feel more comfortable with that than them walking on Flag to school. So that's just kind of my, my thought is, you know, I think maybe we didn't have this issue when we originally put Main Street as a truck exclusion. I don't know what year, what that was done in, but it just seems to me that that at least now is safer than probably when it was initially.
Mr. Dennington?
I, I agree with what Chelsea said. I think it, it probably does make sense to look into the reconsider the Main Street truck exclusion. And it really was not until we had the discussion about the Flag Road exclusion, and I, I actually saw the sign and, you know, knew about the truck restriction going on Route 30, and given that Route 30 is so much straighter and wider than all these other streets that we're talking about, it seems like that's a more appropriate street. If a truck is going to go in that direction, have it go on Main Street, rather than any of these other streets, the side streets.
Thank you. So I think we have a few options thrown out here to us tonight. I think a traffic study, I think, is, is kind of the first step, and I think sooner rather than later. And I think, Chelsea, that may address your and Andrew's point to Main Street as well. Go ahead, Andrew.
But we, we just got a traffic study on, on Flag Road, right? We would be getting a different type of traffic study that would do the whole town, or? Okay. It sounds like there'd be, need to be some definition about what exactly where the traffic would be measured. I mean, because the, the study that was done for Flag Road was for a very short period of time, it's very detailed, right? Would it be, would it be difficult and expensive to get a? I, I just would want to know more about what type of traffic study we're talking about. Do you understand the point that I'm making?
You seem muted. Okay. Marty, I don't know if you or Karen want to address that, because the global study that we were referencing, and you brought it up initially, Marty, do you want to? Or do you want?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd like to get a proposal from, from a traffic engineer. I, I mean, the problem, even with talking about Main Street, is I don't disagree. It's a much, it's a much easier street for, for any vehicle than Flag, Deerfoot, Clifford, a bunch of other streets. I just don't know what, 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 again, what the unintended consequence would be of sending trucks down Main Street. It might make things worse for Deerfoot and Flag and places like that. That's, that's the unknown. And I, and I think it's, it's less for the, you know, a, a traffic study of number of cars or anything like that, but just from, from a, from a flow, what, what what happens if you do this? Where is the traffic likely to go? Again, we can do that as, as laypeople, but I don't think it's terribly effective. And so I guess my thing would be to get some proposals from traffic engineers about this. I don't even know, I know they do these sort of studies. I, I have, I don't have a clue what the cost is. I don't have a clue what the, you know, whether they do them with or without car counts, whether or not they can do them just based on, on, you know, the, looking at a map and understanding the roads. But I think finding that out and finding what sort of studies are available to us, because otherwise, I, I just, I really fear that we're going to be, we're going to be making decisions a little bit in the dark, and, and we're going to make things, things worse for some other roads while making it better for, for one or two roads. And I, I don't think that's the path we want to take.
Sam, go ahead.
I agree with Marty. I think the real challenge here is to define the problem for a study. What are we trying to solve? I don't think it makes a lot of sense for us to be counting cars all over town. But I think if, in, in formulating the problem is sometimes the biggest challenge. But I think something along the lines of, of the goal being to keep the trucks off of, you know, quiet residential streets or scenic ways or whatever, and provide for at least minimum access for trucks that need to get places or through town, et cetera, et cetera. With, with, again, minimum inconvenience to residents, particularly in quiet neighborhoods around town. That's a very vague way to describe it. But something like that to tell, here's what we're trying to come up with. And don't assume that the current exclusions need to remain in place forever. If you were going to start from scratch, what would you do in terms of designing the structure that allows for reasonable flow through town? It protects the neighborhoods in terms of local safety types of issues. I think that kind of study could be done, my guess is relatively inexpensively, because you don't have a lot of people machines out to count the cars, et cetera. But getting feedback from traffic engineering organizations about that kind of thing, I'm sure they do that kind of stuff.
But I don't know what the cost would be. So, that to me is the real question. Start, start.
Yes, Sam, I, I agree. I, I can't imagine there's not other towns or other places that have done something along these lines. And I think we should, and maybe I'm wrong, and Karen, unfortunately, this, this kind of falls in, in your, your bucket, I guess. You know, is there a way that you can get us some information on this? That we can take this up at our September 8th meeting and whether it's, it's having more information as to, you know, you, you kind of have heard what we're looking for. You know, again, we, we have a special town meeting coming up. I'm not as concerned about putting an article on if we need to, to cover the cost of this study, because I think it's important enough that we need to get it done. And I, you know, so again, we would have to have a general idea of what we'd be looking at and scope and everything. And is that something that might be within your wheelhouse to get us some, at least some general information to discuss on the 8th, Karen?
Um, yeah, I, let me see what I can get for kind of scope of works from several different places that we know of. And, and we'll see what they've done similar to that. And then we can get an idea of, of a cost.
And, and, and I just don't think. Sorry. I don't think there'd be like, I'll keep my hands away. I don't think anybody's gonna be upset if, if, if our goal or a big part of our goal is to make South Grove as, as big truck unfriendly as we possibly can. Seriously. I mean, it's, it is. And if that, that means people end up going on Route 9 and 495 and up 85 and otherwise doing big loops because we've got small roads that big trucks shouldn't be on, well, then that's, that's gonna be the economic reality for those large trucks. But I think we can't do that blindly. I think we need information. And I think that information first has to come from a traffic engineer.
Andrew, did that answer your question?
Um, yeah, I think, I think Lisa, what you were suggesting is that Karen can get us very general feedback about what the, what a study like this might look like. And Marty, I do understand the point you're making. It's not as easy as just saying, okay, well, we'll have a meeting and consider removing the truck exclusion for Route 30 because you don't know what that would, would cost.
Oh, Chelsea, did you have something else to add? No. So, I mean, I think if we could get some, again, very general information from you by the 8th, is the board, does the board want to also see if we can have a general, you know, I'd be happy to work with Karen and Mark or whatever, just have a general conversation with DOT, just to see, again, if they may have some suggestions or not. I'd be happy to, we can try to advance that conversation as well.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so that's the path. Before we move on from this, so there's residents from, from Flag here. Uh, Mr. Linden, Mr. Mary, I don't know if you guys want to come up and, and, you know, I mean, you've kind of heard where we're going and, and, you know, be happy just to hear, you know, some general feedback from you as well.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, yes. We appreciate, yeah. No, we appreciate your discussions here and they're all in line with what we're thinking. One of the issues we're running into here is that South Grove, even though we want to exclude trucks from these roads, it's not up to us. So, we need to submit this to MassDOT as Karen indicated here. So, if we do, we spend more money on another traffic study, right? And that comes up with some kind of recommendation. We still need to go to MassDOT. So, the information that Karen has presented so far, as, as you guys saw, meets those criteria. The only question that she also raised was what you, Chelsea, correctly identified Main Street here, right? So, that, as Karen said, we, or you guys, can make that decision to use Main Street as the alternate route. And we could submit that to MassDOT right now, right? Now, Marty, you, Mr. Heda, you raised the question of, okay, well, what does, what happens to the other roads in the area? So, one example is Deerfoot Road, right? For those who have been along, along here, you should know that in 2016, the residents of Deerfoot Road put in a similar request for a traffic exclusion on that road. So, it's not, it's not just the Flag Road residents. We have also the Deerfoot residents, right? Now, the question was, okay, well, if we start excluding trucks from going down Flag Road, what happens to Deerfoot? Well, they're not gonna go in there because the just, Flag Road is excluded from this direction, right? Also, this road up here we just talked about, it already has a truck exclusion. So, you're not gonna have feeder traffic going in there either. The, the other thing is too, like, you could expand this. Now, we don't have the traffic counts, Karen can, can, can say this, right? For Deerfoot, that would justify a track, traffic's exclusion on that road. That was why it was denied in 2016, right? So, the only chance we have as a community to exclude trucks from going into this area is this we have right now. So, I propose instead of spending more money, right now, we, as, as Chelsea indicated, I would just submit this to MassDOT and move on. So, that's, that's some feedback.
Nope. And, and I appreciate that. I, I do. And I, but I still, I kind of, I completely agree with Marty that I think we need to look at it. It's, it's, it's a problem on Flag, but it's also a problem on a lot of other roads in town. And if we have the opportunity to, to get a study done relatively quickly, like I said, we have a fall town meeting, we can go to, we can allocate the funds. Again, certainly appreciate what you're saying. I think Andrew and Chelsea especially have both mentioned Main Street as well. I personally would, would just like to get this study done to, to see. It may not, may be viable. That may be the answer. I know, Marty, I don't know if you want to address this as well.
Yeah, I, I agree with pretty much everything you said, except that I'm not comfortable making a decision without having fuller information. That's all. And I also quite, I mean, they were here earlier. I'd also like to hear the, from our police and fire chief to get their input on what, what, whether or not there would be any implications for throwing additional traffic down Main Street. Again, that is, that, it is, it is, it is the best road of all of these roads we've been talking about to put trucks on. Whether or not we want to do that for, because of other considerations is information I'd like to have.
Yeah. Yeah, that, I want to remind you guys that we submit information at the town meeting, right? With issues we were having, actually, we had a fire truck that was really blocked by an SUV on this road. And just imagine if you have a big truck coming down and there's, there's, there's an issue. So, there are a lot of precedents. People have mentioned Eaton Wheelers knocking down mailboxes, knocking down lawns. Just the other day, it's like two months ago, there was a truck that backed into a phone pole that split in half, right? I don't know if you heard, I mean, Karen, you heard of it, right? So, this is getting to be at the point where it's like, if there, fortunately, right, there hasn't been any people hurt, but we're very, very close to that situation. So, we need to move. We need to get this done. So.
Well, no, thank you. I mean, I, I appreciate your opinion. I mean, obviously, I think you've heard tonight, everybody here has a concern. You know, we're just trying to work towards a solution. So, hi, how are you? Oh, I should have asked. Sorry, Mr. Linden, can you give your name and your address? That was the first thing I should have done. So, if you could do that and then we'll go.
Yeah, I can give my name. Yeah, Jonas Linden, 495.
Sorry, welcome to Fugit again. Just do the same name and address.
First needs Mary, 18 Flag Road. And, you know, at the risk of sounding redundant, I think most of the issues have been brought up. And thank you for thus far supporting a truck exclusion. Chelsea had mentioned it, but yeah, there are schools there and there are a lot of kids walking, riding their bikes, unicycles, you name it. We got them going down the road. And this is about the kids' safety. Flag Road is a neighborhood filled with children going to two different schools that dumps right there onto Deerfoot, to Trotter and Neri. And this is very important for their safety. So, I just wanted to know.
Thank you. And, and, sorry, thank you. And thank you both for coming tonight and staying until after 10 o'clock for the discussion. But again, you know, it's, it's important that we hear from you. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I'm just gonna read a comment that came in as well from Nicole Ryan, that Main Street is sidewalks and does not have children walking to and from school five days a week, nine months a year. The comparison of Deerfoot Flag to Main Street is not really appropriate. Let's remove the exclusion on Main Street and put it on Deerfoot Flag since it's more needed. Could someone please explain if there's a solution? So, again, Ms. Ryan, I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, your comments and that the board did see it. So, thank you. And thank you. All right, Karen, what do we have left for you? Tree policy, is that the last piece? We covered everything else. Just making sure that I didn't check something off I shouldn't have checked off. So, um, Karen, why don't we start with you on the tree? And then I know Sam has, wants to speak to it as well.
Um, well, it's actually, it, it, I, Mr. Stivers' policy that he was coming up with for this, so it probably might be better for him to speak to it. I, I'm really more just a.
All right, Sam, you get the floor.
Um, thanks. I, as Karen mentioned, we've been working on this for a while now and had some initial conversations with Karen, Mimi Latrell, who's here tonight from the planning board. Mr. Purple was involved originally, Town Council and Town Planner, tried to find a way to record and make public a policy, more explicit policy, based on various town, state laws and regulations for trees, free removal and trimming. And so, what we did was we put together a draft of that and worked through a couple of different iterations of it. And it sort of fell aside for a while and has now been revived. And we had a draft that I thought we were making good progress on in terms of getting various people aligned on it. Karen has expressed some concerns recently about how practical this, how workable this is. And I guess the observation that I'd make is that we have two different sets of state laws basically for this. One relative to trees on scenic roads, and in fact, by my count, 18 scenic roads in town, where the planning board has some authority over tree removal and trimming and maintenance. And other roads in town that are not scenic ways, again, is typically the tree warden who is part of DPW. And where I thought we were headed was to say that there would be tree hearings for all trees on scenic ways that would be combined hearings between the planning board and DPW, which is the way that it had been done a number of years ago, apparently according to the planning board without particular difficulty. And that's a good way to actually make it easier for the public to have to go to one hearing instead of two separate hearings. And for the different organizations to have to advertise separate hearings and to post separate placards on the trees to be discussed. And then the other side of it is that if the non-scenic road trees, again, more universally, were subject for tree hearings, it would give the opportunity for the public to be more involved because I have gotten some complaints from folks about trees. There've been a couple of trees recently last year or so on Deerfoot and on Flag Road that created a fair amount of public concern. So, having a policy that, that makes it reasonably understandable for people to see what the process is when they have an opportunity to be involved or not, and everybody's sort of playing by the same rules, seemed to me at least to be a useful process here. So, that, that was the genesis of a lot of it. So, what we worked on was a statement that's in the packet now that had, until very recently, that's what I thought was a single issue, which was whether a joint hearing is required for all trees on scenic ways or not for combined hearing. And then, again, Ms. Allen has some other comments about how practical those joint hearings are. So, I'll open it up to Karen's comments or others' comments.
Okay, that worked that time. I don't know why. Hopefully it'll work when I go to shut it off. That's the key. And so, when we started the process, it was, we, we had the two trees people were very upset about. Generally, we've done, we have a tree contract for the last, well, prior to me being here for, but at least the last 21 years, where we have a contract, we take trees down, we have hearings for anything that seems alive, which generally is not what we're trying to take down. And like, pretty much everything's pretty much stick dead. And, and we get calls from our residents, our tree list generally comes from our residents complaining about trees. And we haven't, we, we generally don't have a lot of issues with it. Through this process that we were looking at, and, and I will say that I did definitely had a change of heart. So, it's not, this is not like an, that, that Mr. Stivers kind of misconstrued. I, I was trying to get along and deal with it and, and say, yeah, that's, that's fine. We'll, we'll do it. Because I really, last year, just did not have the bandwidth to be able to really take on one more issue. So, basically, a lot of this, the clouds have cleared on several things for me. And I have a little more bandwidth, but not only that, looking at the fact that tying, tying the DPW's hands to something and having hearings for trees that I don't think we need to have hearings for, and having joint hearings for something where it's not required by law, it, it, I don't want to tie the hands of the next guy who's gonna sit there in my seat and say, oh, my God, I can't believe she let this happen, right? And there are towns that do it. There, there are towns that, that it's done all different ways, absolutely. And, you know, I, I can appreciate it. I know Mr. Stivers looked at other towns to find some of these and, and come up with some ideas. But the, the fact is, is that the trees are protected through a master general laws. The scenic roads, the trees on scenic roads are treated somewhat differently when they're part of a roadway project through the town. And that's when the, the planning board has, has the authority and actually is supposed to weigh in on whether or not a tree can come down. Because otherwise, it's like the, the fox watching hen house, right? Because the DPW generally is the tree ward. There's a reason why they put the tree ward in the DPW. And, but the, if the select board wants to, they can appoint anybody to be the tree ward. You could appoint the planning board. And then it's out of the DPW's hands. And you can have all the hearings you want. And they do them all. And then just give us the list and we use the contract to take it down. The plant, you know, the residents would call through the planner to get that. I, I wouldn't recommend it because the amount of calls we get about trees and, and all is, is a lot more than you would expect. I do recommend if anyone is questioning how many trees we might need to have come down, look up when you drive once in a while instead of down, especially this time of year, because you can see all the trees that are, have no leaves, leaves and are, are dead. And that's what people are calling about generally. Again, if we try to do it as efficiently as possible and as, you know, with as fiscally cheaply as we can. So, when we can piggyback on something else, we do. We now have started, because this is, this came from this, we, we have inventory and we have them on our website of, of trees. So, we've done Flag Road, Woodland Road, a lot of our through streets, because those tend to be the streets where things are dead. Otherwise, it's subdivision and, and the, the, the trees are still young, you know? And we can even take them down if they needed to be down. But we had arborists go down and, and you can just see from that the amount of trees that, that are actually being called on to be taken down, like should be taken down based on these reports. And you know, we did ask Town Council, the new Town Council, is this, is, if it's a hazard tree, if it's a dead tree? Yes, like you don't need to have a hearing for a dead tree. I mean, I'm sure we can get that redone if we need to, but that, that's. that, that's part of the problem is having a hearing for every, all these trees that we know are coming down, it's just adding a layer, it's adding a problem. We couldn't do any additional trees last year because we we were trying to work within this policy. And if it wasn't, if we hadn't heard the tree, we can't take it down, so we have people calling. And we, I will say, we had two that had split. And I had pictures of that the split had grown and, and so we took down one over on Still Road, then we took down another one that was a huge concern, but that did not, it didn't merit coming up to here. But we did have hearings on some live trees and it was posted on the website, it was posted in the paper and it was done on everything. And, and, you know, everybody has the opportunity, all you have to do is send an email that says, hey, I don't think a tree should come down, and automatically comes the selectmen. And that, that's the way the state law is written for any tree. So, it, it, it takes nothing to actually force, force the hearing up here and then it's done by an elected board.
Sorry, I can't make it go away.
Thanks. And, and again, Karen, I appreciate the issue of practical and easy to use, et cetera. I would point out though, that last fall, there were two separate hearings for trees. Each one had something like twenty or so trees in it. And I thought that was actually a very well organized and operated process. We didn't have the joint hearing with that one, but again, it worked very quickly. And they had this viewing the week or so before, before the actual hearing. And arborists went around, the folks who were interested and evaluated the trees, explained what was live, what wasn't, and what was an issue, et cetera. And the decision process was extremely quick and effective in terms of that. So there were no arguments about that, once folks understood from the arborists, what was required. And then the planning board had a hearing that basically corroborated what the tree warden hearing said. So there wasn't a lot of contention there, certainly. But at least had there been differences of opinion, I think it would have been more effective to have everybody together in one hearing instead of both for the scenic way, the scenic road. So, that was one of the things that drove me to say that it can work if it was done the way it was done last time. And it's not a big imposition if there's one or two evening hearings a year in front of the planning board for this to allow, again, for more public input and discourse as part of that process. So, that seems to me to be a fair trade-off, but really one who's actually managing that.
I, I dove into this policy pretty deeply today. And I guess my first question is, has, has this gone to Mr. Talman for him to take a look at it? Okay. Okay. I mean, I think, I think it's important that we do that. I will, and the reason is, I'm not new to reading statutes, these are confusing statutes.
State statutes, yes.
And, and I guess a couple of things, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not inclined to wanna complicate things. And it's, what's, what's laid out in the, in the state process seems to make sense as, as confusing as, as making your way through the statutes is. And so, as I was reading them and looking at what the state is trying to accomplish, I guess my first question is, what is, what problem, the problem, not, not desire? What problem is this policy seeking to address? What's the, what's the problem that's seeking to be solved by, by what is essentially a change in the way we're doing things? What's the problem?
My thought is the problem is to assure that there is more public transparency and opportunity to participate in the process and that hearings are, again, held when they need to be held and, and held, by view, in a conservative way, in the sense of if there's a doubt about particular thing that needs to be done, let's have a hearing on it so the public know that the tree is subject to potential removal, trimming, et cetera. So we err on the side of caution, if you will, in terms of allowing people to participate in the process. Which I don't think the state law does as completely as I would like to see.
So there's, there is currently required, whether, whatever category the tree falls in, there has to be a hearing. One of those categories of trees, the hearing is simply with the tree warden. Correct? And any of those trees, there is an, a, an absolute right for there to be a hearing before the Board of Selectment. So, again, I'm, I'm at a loss for understanding what the problem is. If that, if that avenue is available, what, I mean, that allows, that allows transparency, that allows for, where the state law has determined the, the buck stops, which is the Board of Selectment, for the Board of Selectment to have that opportunity. And I guess I'm a little bit uncomfortable, I don't know, do other towns do this where basically we are the, we are the appellate? We, we are the appellate body for another elected board for the planning board? That just seems odd to me.
Well, A, it's a state law. And B, it would be, I think, difficult if the planning board made a decision first place on scenic road trees.
No, 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 but I'm saying, if, if, is, is, if the planning board makes a, makes a decision, is the board, is right now the Board of Selectment an appellate body for the planning board? No, I don't think so, but we would be, we would be making ourselves an appellate body by having the joint hearing.
At least one of the state laws, we are.
And I think there's a reason for that, I mean, it's just, it's an odd construct for one elected body to be the appellate body for another one. I think that's probably why the statute is, is why they function that way. That's my guess, I could be wrong.
So the, the chapter eighty-seven, which is the non-scenic road trees, if anybody objects to a tree removal that comes to the Board of Selectment. Currently, the scenic roads, which any road project widening sidewalks that are, would affect a public shade tree, go, there's supposed to be joint hearings with the tree warden and the planning board. And there's currently no appeal for that.
And I'm guessing, again, I'm guessing the reason there's no appeal for that is because, well, there would be, actually, I'm guessing there is an appeal, you could go to court. But I'm guessing that the reason for that is, is, I'm not, maybe it exists, but I'm not aware of a situation where one elected board is the appellate body for another elected board. And this would create that situation. Or it would be a situation where the, if you had a joint hearing for those trees, where, where someone could appeal the joint decision and then the selectmen would be disagreeing with the planning board, how does that go to court? Again, it just, that's why I want Town Council to take a look at me, at this. It just strikes me as, as inviting at least complexity. So is, is there, so putting aside the question of a joint hearing, is there another way? If the concern is transparency, is there another way to address it without having a separate hearing or a joint hearing with you folks? Has anybody explored that from a transparency standpoint or otherwise?
Mimi, go ahead, just unmute.
I'd just like to say, historically, all tree hearings were joint hearings with the planning board and the tree warden. And that inexplicably stopped somewhere around 2014. I think that was the last, those were the last hearings for public shade trees since, and then we had them again in October of 2020. So that, that process worked all those years.
Do we know, did the statutes change? Why did it change in 2014? Did something about that change it?
So, so, it, the, the, probably in 2014, or and the one before that, because we, we, we have not notoriously had a lot of tree hearings, okay? We, we taking down dead trees and we'd never thought we needed to take, have a tree hearing for a dead tree. So, I've had a joint hearing because people wanted trees down at Redgate. And, and so they, they weren't taken down, right? So we, we actually, the DPWs, we think there's sight distance issues, so we had joint hearing for Redgate with, with the planning board, because that's a scenic road.
But, but it sounds like, what was Latrell saying, is something changed in 2014?
No, it didn't, it just, we just haven't had anything that we have taken down that was live since then. We had, we had a hearing on, for, like, anything we've done, it's because the DPW needed it done. That's when we've had a hearing with the planning board. And I was told at one point, when I first started, I was told that every road in town was scenic road. So, we had one early on when I started, after, right after John Bowlen retired, for the intersection at Corderville Road and Richards, because we were putting that traffic light in. And we had a hearing for, for trees down there, which we actually didn't need to because that's not a scenic road. But then, and we've done it for, National Grid had done it, but prior to that, there was not a history of, it's, we have not had yearly tree hearings ever. It's only been on live trees that were coming down that the DPW needed down.
Okay, I saw one of your meetings and I saw Mr. Morris, sort of the, you know, the repository of all things historic when it comes to the planning board. Yeah. Because I saw him talk about the fact that there had been these sort of hearings. So, but it's not, you don't think that there were? I, I, I don't know one way or the other.
They weren't constant hearings, the hearings were very specific because DPW was asking for trees down. So they were joined when we did them.
Okay, I'm gonna stop talking. It just, I guess a first step would, for me, would just be to get some clarity from Town Council about, again, first of all, whether or not legally, you could have a, one, one elected board be the appellate body for another elected board. The answer may be simple, it doesn't raise any problems at all, that it's unusual, but it's, but it's not a problem. And then I guess wait, I'll see what other folks on the, on the, on the, on the board think. I hear you, it sounds like the issue that is trying to be addressed is simply one of transparency. And so it's transparent, so transparency on the one hand, whether or not you can do it, that's a kind of a threshold question on the other hand. And then, is that, is that whatever additional transparency would be gotten by having the joint hearings worth the complications that Karen has identified? I mean, I think that's kind of enough of the issue, okay?
And in fact, the Town Council issue is, in fact, the issue.
Kind of does away with it.
The other point that I make is that I think part of the confusion comes is, I don't, the state laws do not distinguish between live trees and dead trees. So in fact, the process of applying the state laws, I think, needs to work similarly for live and dead trees. And I think that, then, is, I understand, is the elegance. And so, and those are where you get a lot of complaints from folks saying this tree is dead, it needs to come down, et cetera, et cetera. But to have a consistent policy, I think this is useful and to have a consistent state law, also, is useful too.
Like I said, I'm done talking.
Thank you, Marty, and I think that's a valid point, that if we start doing mutual hearings, and then what if Karen thinks one thing and Planning Board thinks another as well? What, what is the?
What gets appealed?
What's the avenue, where does it go to? Because on the planning board's side, it would go to court, but on a Karen's side, typically it would come to us. So I think, I would, I think that's a great idea to get some clarity. And maybe we can, well, we have you on the eighth as well, this is something we can get clarity, Mr. Purple, from Council Four, and we can put this back on our meeting on the eighth.
And while we've got Mimi here, is that, Sam expressed, I mean, aside from the fact that it was done, it used to be done a different way. And again, we can let Mr. Morris weigh in with his institutional memory, but is this, is, is what Sam identified your issue as well, and that is a question of transparency? Or is there something else?
Well, public shade trees are a public asset, asset owned by the public. And so when they're taken down, the public should be notified and be able to comment on that. The meetings that we had in October, you know, the planning board's well-versed at hearings, well-versed at notification. People know where to look for planning board meetings, will know where to look for the agenda. The tree hearings weren't under the meeting calendar, the ones at the DPW. They showed up under other hearings, which people usually don't look there when they're trying to figure out what's going on. And the meeting was held in the DPW yard at noon time on a Thursday, which isn't really publicly accessible, it's not, during the middle of the workday, it's not really a accessible time. I just think that the planning board is more well-versed at holding hearings in public, a public asset the public should have comment on.
And if I can, is there a reason why you, why you all schedule your hearings when you do? Is there some rationale for that?
Because of the fact that people just have to send in, an email to say that they, they're not, they want to talk about it, or they want more information or answer questions. Also, because I wanted to view the trees, because I knew that Planning Board was gonna come. And so we had to have our arborists come and we wanted to do that during the daytime. But generally, we, we wouldn't, like, I have a, like, if you go into the website and you look and you see the list, then you see what the arborist says about each tree. There's actually, you know, it's, it's already there, there's no reason, if we pick the three worst trees on each of those lists, like, they're dead trees, we shouldn't even have to have a hearing because it's a dead tree and it's hazard. So that's, that's where a lot of it pulls from also, is that we generally don't have hearings. Because we only have them when they're live.
Is there, is there a, assuming that the hurdle can be cleared, that, I mean, again, if the hurdle is, you can't have one appellate, one elected board be the appellate board for another, that, 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 that does away with this entirely. But, but let's assume that hurdle is cleared. Is there a, is there a middle ground? I gotta think that you're not concerned about dead trees and, and, I mean, I would think most of the trees that are being taken down, there's not an issue. That's my guess. Am I wrong about that?
Well, it depends on the definition of dead trees. Supposedly, the tree on Deerfoot was a dead tree, but it was deemed a dead tree, you know, three years prior to when it was taken down, it was certainly enough time for a hearing there.
I, I hear you.
And I know there were several trees taken down in Woodland that were said to be a hazard, but it was noticed, you know, weeks before that the road was gonna be closed because the trees were coming down.
I'm just wondering that again, assuming, assuming the hurdle could be cleared, that, that one elected board can be the appellate for the other, I'm not gonna say it over and over again. But, but, again, it would, let's assume that, we get by that. Is there a middle ground? For instance, Karen, when you come up with a list of the trees that are gonna, you're gonna have a hearing for, for instance, if, do those go to the planning board before your hearing?
No, no, because we normally wouldn't have a hearing if we know the tree is dead. So if you look, it's stick dead, there's not a leaf on it, we just take it down.
Okay. And do you not want that to happen?
I just don't think it's been the practice. I think trees that weren't stick dead have been taken down. And I think, in the, as Sam alluded to, there's no, in the, in the statute, chapter eighty-seven, it, it says, public shade, all public shade trees, not live public shade trees. And to have a hearing is, you know, not that big a hurdle for the public, for there to be transparency in saying we're taking these down because they're stick dead.
No, I'm just, again, I'm trying to find out, I do, I am, I'm taking Karen at her word that there is a, that it will, that it will complicate DPW's work if there's a hearing on every, every tree in town that's taken down, that falls under the category of public safe. If there's a hearing on every, every tree in town that's taken down, that falls under the category of public safe shade tree, dead, live, whatever. And I'm just wondering if there's a middle ground where. You know, the trees to be taken down can be identified, sent to the planning board, and if there are trees in that that are problematic. Then, then there's a hearing on those, but not the 80, 90, whatever percent of the trees that aren't a problem. It just seems crazy to me, I could be wrong, to have a hearing about every tree that the DPW is taking down. That just seems crazy. But maybe I'm. Maybe I'm not, not tree sensitive enough. But it, by the same token, if there are trees where there are issues, if, if there's a mechanism for it, and it's, it, it doesn't otherwise. Implicate transparency issues, then is there a mechanism for doing that? That's the middle ground I'm looking for. Is, is that a middle ground you might be able to live with?
Oh, yes, because like I said, we have, when we did all those reports on, we had arborists come, so I can actually. Pick the trees that I know we need to do most and send it to planner to, to send on. You know, which has, has actually the information about the health of the tree.
Is, is that sort of hybrid approach, something that you would at least consider?
I am, but one member of the planning board.
I'm, I'm asking because the trail, not the planning board.
Yeah, I think that's workable because those trees would be discussed in a public hearing that the public would have access to in. Well, not a public hearing, a public meeting, sorry. So. And if there was some, you know, I know for one, I would look at all the trees to make sure they were stick dead before. Having, so that would.
October experience was that those stick dead trees took no time, basically. It was pretty clear. So that was not, in my view at least, an inconvenience for anybody because it was pretty clear. There were a handful of trees. Out of that, those hearings that were subject to discussion. And the arborist's input was very valuable on those. Most of them being down, actually. A couple of them were pruned instead of taken down. But again, 80% of the ones that were on the list were clear, no, no problem. Didn't require a lot of time to discuss. But mechanism that it would be suggested, however, you know, full access to those, to opine on. On that, those trees and get information from arborists who were involved in that.
Chair, I am going to shut up because it's 10 of 11, but at least, I guess two things. I, I think it makes sense to have Mr. Talaman weigh in on the, on the whole elected board issue. And then. Maybe Karen, you come up with a, with a. Proposal for how that might, assuming we get past that hurdle, how it might work for putting together a list that then goes to planning. You guys. Could then say which trees are problematic and the others off with their heads.
No, that's fine, because the, the two trees that we only trimmed, we were gonna have, we would have had a hearing on normally. And there are probably two or three others that we took down that we would have had a hearing on, but other than that. The stuff was dead.
Also, and I guess too, if planning board gets a list and Mimi, you think there is an issue with the tree, you can certainly, as a citizen. Bring it to the board of selection and we welcome you to come. So, all right, that.
We can meet till midnight.
We can meet till midnight. So, all right, that being said, Chelsea, I don't know if you want to add anything, if you're on board with just moving forward with the process, we'll discuss it again on the eighth. Okay, yes, Andrew, do you have anything to add, or you comfortable with, with the process that we've sent?
Hate to say it because it's eight minutes before 11, but I actually do have a, a question about this. Just as an example, so the, the trees, I mean, Mimi, I think you mentioned the trees on Woodland Road. Right now, that definitely I'm familiar with. There are, there were some very big, very dead trees. Around where I live. Between, you know, like Woodbury and Oregon Road. So those trees were taken down. I remember seeing a. Notice posted on those trees. So was that a case where there was a hearing on those trees and there was no opposition to it? And then they came down, because those were clearly dead trees. I thought they were hazardous and it was good. I think that they were taken down.
Sorry, if, if there was a notice on them, then they were heard. And that would have been last year. The years, couple of years prior, we had taken down some other large trees on woodland in that same area that, that we did not post that, that were, were dead, that we just took down without a hearing.
Andrew, did that answer your question?
Yeah, so the holding of the hearing didn't slow down the process of. Taking down what was an obviously, maybe a little bit.
It slowed it down because we, we didn't have a contract. We had to wait till we had all the trees so that we knew what, how much we could take down. So. We're looking at a different way of bidding the, the contract this year. And then basically, yes, we could add trees, but nonetheless, they could come in, if they, if they can come in and we don't have a, haven't had a hearing yet, and they're like, oh, we have a week. We could, we could do the ones that we don't need hearings on and just wait on those other ones.
Sorry, are you good, Andrew? Okay, I think we, we have a path on that one, Karen. Sam, are you good? Okay, we have a path. We'll put this back on the agenda for the eighth. Karen, please run while you can. I thought 9:30, I'm way off tonight. Okay, so chairman's report, I'm going to do this really, really quick. I had the pleasure of attending Barbara J. Andrews' retirement party from the food pantry. After 25 plus years as being the director, I was able to present the citation. On the board, which was wonderfully received, and as well as one from Carolyn Dykema. So kudos to Barbara. Thank you for, again, for everything you did. She did send a note thanking the board. For the citation. She had no idea it was coming. So it was, it was a great surprise to be able to do that for her. She had a nice turnout. The second thing is I will ask the board to. Mark your calendars, if you can, for September 25th, for a CERT, MRC. Recognition for the work that they did during the flu clinic. CERT and MRC volunteered over 300 hours. With not only greeting but vaccinating as well. Towards the end, MRC members were used for vaccinating. We had members that did both greeting and vaccinating. And individual people, some people did over 50 hours of time during the clinic. So this is an opportunity to. Recognize them and Carolyn Dykema is, is attending as well. We're gonna have a nice little light lunch in there, some sandwiches. And again, it's just a way to thank them. So if there are any members that are available on the 25th. By all means, please. 11 to one, sorry, thank you very much. 11 to one. And then one other thing that I didn't have on here quick is Mr. Hagerty shared with me today that on September 1st, the post office will be unveiling the new thank you stamp. And Postmaster Ryan DeOrio wishes to dedicate this beautiful new stamp to all of the members of the Southborough community. Who assisted to ensure that during the 2020 COVID crisis, Southborough elections were held safely and effectively managed, including the 6,500 ballots delivered by mail. So the postmaster and the regional manager of the post offices will be on hand for the ceremony. All Southborough residents are invited to attend. We'll put this on the town website as well. It'll be held in front of the townhouse at nine o'clock on Wednesday, September 1st. So again, if any members are available at that time, kudos to the clerk's office for that great feat that they did. And with that being said, I'm done. Language interpreter services, Ms. Malinowski, I believe that's you.
Yeah, I'll be quick. So currently we have language interpreter services available to the police department. And I am working with some other town departments on rolling that out. So that they can have access to it. Overall, the police have used it over the last three years, an average of $300 a year. So it's not a ton, but I think there's some other. Departments in town that could, that could use it. Board of Health voted last week to, to use it and to. Have it come out of the contracted services line. So we'll be tracking to see how much we use it. So just wanted to give an update there.
Chelsea is, just curious, do we know, is it, is it, is it primarily Spanish language? Is it, is it a, where, where do the, the stats fall on that?
So I don't have the stats, but the contract, sorry, I don't have the stats for how much we've used it, but there's 290 languages that are provided through telelanguage. And I do know that we have over 30 languages spoken at our preschool at Finn. So I think it could be a pretty wide range of languages, but, and, and the pricing is different depending on the language. Spanish is, I think. 60 something cents an hour, and then the other languages are all 80 cents an hour.
Go ahead, Sam.
Comment on that. I think it's 60 cents a minute, 80 cents a minute, an hour. But, but also I, I would suggest, I saw an item on the youth and family services agenda recently, talking about translation services. So I know we've got to check with them. Sound like they were headed towards something independently. That would be great to help them into this as well, I think, so.
That's, that's the other department I'm, I'm working with, just on how, where they're going to pay it from. That's all. But I am talking to Sarah about it. Could you hear me?
All right, Mr. Purple.
Madam Chair, just to piggyback on what Ms. Malinowski was talking about, I'm doing some behind the scenes work for her. On the translation services. So again, we do have this contract. It's on the state bid list, pretty much been used by the police department. And actually, Ms. Barry has been in contact with the vendor. And looking to provide us a new contract, which will broaden the scope of departments that can use it. So I will leave it to Ms. Malinowski, if she wants, to identify those departments. And we'll make sure that, that all those departments that we even think may need it, we can include it, you know, in that. And again, the company has no issue with, they're only getting about $300 a year, with expanding the possibility of them getting maybe $400 a year. You know, for, for some of this, but I think it'd be, you know, a good opportunity. I don't know. What the school has in place, but can have a conversation with the superintendent and see if that's something that they want to be lumped in with as well. The only item I had on is really kind of a killjoy, because I was hoping it was a little bit more of an update. I was hoping I was going to talk a little bit about. The cable studio having everything all set for the Zoom integration software. As you probably can see, we don't have that yet. Did get notice from the cable studio. That some of the items for the Zoom integration piece are backordered. You know, they're having trouble getting things as quickly as they need. They're looking at mid-September for some of the items coming in. So hopefully that's going to, you know, pick up quickly in September. And maybe we can start targeting. First meeting in October, to be able to have some of this integration. We can get rid of some of these individual screens, which, you know, we're actually starting to get good at. A little bit with some of these things, but they're still a little bit cumbersome. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. So we have quite a, a long list of consent agenda items. We'll go down the list or go down the row and see if there's any holds, Mr. Healy. Mr. Stiver. Mr. Dennington.
I do not have any holds.
Ms. Malinowski. I don't have any holds, but I didn't hear if there were any holds. Just A by Mr. Healy. That being said, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, Azren?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Let's see, Stivers.
I just got bounced off.
I was gonna say, I don't see you. You can always jump down a chair, Sam. All right, we'll go through the rest of the list then. Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Mr. Dennington.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
And Ms. Brascio, aye.
Forced to use the town.
Mr. Stivers, as he, as he sits in the new chair.
Hi. I, I'm not, I'm a Mac person. I'm a Mac person.
I didn't say Brascio, I'll say Brascio aye again, thank you. Mr. Healy, item A.
Yes, and, and I'm going to move to reappoint Ms. Dean's Row to the historical commission. I'm the one who held it last time. But I was particularly buoyed by our meeting, whatever it was, a month ago or so. By conversations I had with a couple of historical commission members after the, the meeting. And, and very, and very encouraged by my conversation with those members that, that they're very much as a means to get the historical commission on track. So, so that's my motion to reappoint Ms. Dean's Row to, for the term ending 6/30/24. Second.
Roll call, Mr. Stiver.
Aye.
Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Mr. Dennington.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski. And Ms. Brascio, aye. All right, so, let's see. Review updated noise bylaw, ad hoc committee charge. Chelsea, I will send this to you first, and I also have one change as well.
Okay, so based on our conversation last meeting, I just made. Two changes. One was to include a minimum of three public hearings to take in input. And then I had been, I was actually just looking around at some other towns. That had a noise bylaw committee, and I thought that incorporating the second bullet that I changed there to say clearly defined purpose and enforcement. Enforcement that address current issues. So that's, that way it's clear on what, what the rationale is and what the reasoning is behind. The. The bylaw and whatever sections that it exists in. And then the enforcement piece would be for both, you know, whether it's police or board of health that is enforcing.
Any comments? Sorry, any comments or questions based on Ms. Malinowski's recommendations?
I'll, I'll just comment very quickly that I, I think both of them make an awful lot of sense. And I think the idea of the, of the public forums. I mean, I, it's pretty apparent that this is, is an issue that people want to talk about, and they have very strong feelings about on, I don't want to say both sides of it, but on a, you know, variety of different ways. So I think having, requiring those public forums is really important.
Okay, and the only other thing I wanted the board to consider was the first bullet point, review of previous versions of noise bylaws. Prepared for Southborough's town meetings. I thought we had talked about this and we wanted the committee to start with a fresh, a fresh take in, in reviewing what other towns are doing. And again, maybe my recollection is incorrect, but I thought that was one of the processes we talked about doing was not wanting to start with something that had already been done. But you could potentially use it, I suppose, but again, unless I'm, my recollection is wrong. Curious to hear if anyone else recollects the way I do.
I don't have a strong recollection one way or the other. I do remember talking about not. I think it was specific as to the most recent bylaw. And not use that as a, as a, as a launching pad for this one. Again, I, I'm fine, since we really don't have a bylaw in Southborough, I'm fine taking that bullet out and relying on what actually exists in other towns that have been enacted as bylaws. So I'd be fine taking it out.
I, I'm okay with that too. And I think I had put that in there originally to say, here are things that we had started with and not necessarily saying that's the right way to do it. But I saw that sort of as part of the overall breadth of other towns and what we've done in one category, to look at everything there. So not to exclude what we've done particularly, but not to endorse it as the right answer. So, I mean, I, I'd be inclined to leave it in, but not. Too upset to take it out, so.
Chelsea or Andrew?
I'm inclined to leave it in for the reasons that Mr. Stivers mentioned.
Sorry, Chelsea.
I'm. I understand why it's in there. But I understand Lisa's point too, that we don't want that, like, we want people to. To bring their own. You know, research and so. I.
The weather's. I was gonna say the weather's. Sorry, I'm talking, the weather's too nice out on the islands, Chelsea. You can't, you can't vote on both sides of the issue.
Are you alone?
All right, go ahead.
I, almost like a, like a lesser version of review, right? Like, be aware of, rather than like. You know, be aware of isn't the right word. I'm not thinking of a good word right now, but I understand what Lisa's saying, like, don't have that be like where you're where you're starting with, but don't lose sight of like what's already been done. So I guess I am voting on both sides, but I don't like the word review.
All right, based on that, Mr. Healy, I'm going to pump back to you on this one. So what would be potentially a better word than review to use? Including. Hold on.
How about just collect? Make a look at them if they want.
That's good.
Okay.
Let's. Okay, so um, with those three changes, do we have a motion to update and accept the new noise bylaw ad hoc committee charge?
Still moved. Second, second.
Great, roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy.
Aye.
Mr. Dennington.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
And Ms. Brascio, aye. Thank you very much. Done. Uh, warrant articles for special town meeting. Um. At this point, I think the only articles I'm aware of would be the downtown district. Uh, Carrie mentioned tonight for, I think it was Northborough Road, that need an article for that. Um. Chelsea, again, I don't know. Uh. Yeah, I'll just know where I'm going with it.
Um. IT's new position. Right, we'll need, I know that will be on Personnel Board's, um, will sponsor it, not us, but at least that one. Um, Board of Health last week talked about potentially increasing their budget, um, given what's going on with, well, depending on what happens with cares, obviously. Um, but if you remember the way that that was funded is there's fifteen hours in the budget currently for the nurse. And seventeen for or seventeen and a half for the health director. And the difference between um, their regular hours and the budgeted hours need to be COVID time. So um, we're monitoring that. I think um, fiscal year to date, as of last week, there was an hour and a half that was not covered by cares, which I know is not a lot, but it but we do have a concern that um, that we could run into an issue um, with having to use the reserve fund. And I think we'd rather bring at least one of those positions to town meeting in the fall. Um, so I have that one and I think um, Advisory has been talking about bringing an article forward to address two out of their three um, things that they had brought to annual town meeting. So I just know of that one. Um. And so that that was my list.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Purple. Are you aware of any other potential, I guess I'll say potential articles?
No, I think other than the ones that were just mentioned, the only other one I had a placeholder, I think, um, and I cannot remember who on the board had mentioned it as to whether the board wanted to consider changing from a Board of Selectment to a Select Board.
Um. That was Chelsea.
Oh, okay. And Chelsea did mention on her list, so. Now that would be seven. We're limited to eight articles, so, you know, we want to keep this tight. Um, no, I don't have anything other than that. The the only one that I just added to my list is the possibility of a traffic study. Um, you know, we had just, we we just finished talking about this, so.
At the top.
Um, that is really all that that um, that I have.
Mr. Healy, do you have any to add? Mr. Stivers?
Yeah.
So I just, can you hear me? I just have one more question on that. Can we just talk about the timing of when um, we when articles need to be submitted? To um, so I think, Mr. Purple, if you can.
So the board opened the warrant this evening. Um, the board meets on September eighth and September twenty-second. Um. I think it would be, it would be nice if the, it would be reasonable, I think, if the warrant closed on September twenty-second. Which would give the um, which would give council a chance to work through some of these issues and bring a final um, a final warrant for the board um, uh, to to sign off on first meeting in October. So then we have a chance to get it to the printer, get it printed um, and and handle those issues. So I I I think that's the, that's generally the rough timeframe. If these are the articles that we have. Um, I know that Personnel Board is is coming to a conclusion on um, on the the IT position. They may have another change they're looking at in the SAP with regards to performance evaluations and making some tweaks to the language. So but again, that all falls under the SAP bylaw. Um. This really shouldn't be a heavy lift for a lot of these articles. I think the biggest lift is the downtown district bylaw. And and that should flush itself out through the planning board hearings.
Anything else? Anybody? Andrew, you're unmuted, by the way. Okay, um, next up is mask mandate for town buildings. So I wanted the um, the board to consider, do you want me to? I know you spoke to Heather as well. Okay, so with what what the the numbers increasing, one of the things I wanted the board to consider was not a long term, but potentially a a short term um, mandate, we can relook at it. But I think at least um, to have anybody coming into the townhouse, um, having requiring a mask. Uh, as far as employees, if you're at your desk and there's nobody near you or you're not dealing with the public, then you don't necessarily have to or or one of your peers. I think we should consider this based on, uh, when I talked to um, Dr. Elker from the Board of Health, she said our numbers right now are actually higher than they were last August. Um, people aren't getting as sick, mind you, but here we're coming out of our first real summer as well, where people were able to get away. And I think a lot of people took advantage of that. So um, I'm asking for the board to consider at least through the end of September, a mask mandate for town buildings. Um, some places are doing it already. You know, a lot of the seniors at the senior center are more comfortable wearing their masks. Uh, some aren't, but I think this kind of sets the stage. Um, I'm I'm certainly open to hear what other members say. I mean, I think, again, you you're you're giving time for a month, the kids are going back to school. Um, we can relook at it. One of the other things to consider is if the board does do this, then it would be really hard for us to sit here with masks on and the microphones to pick us up. So we would actually be looking to go back and and um, boards and committees as well to go back to Zoom for the month of September. I certainly want to relook, relook at it. We could do it at our September twenty-second meeting and and see where we're at um, to move forward. I know we, Marty, you pushed really hard and I think it was a great, great for us to get back in person. I do, I just, I have a worry um, just again, so I'll I'll open that up to the board. It's just something I'd like the board to consider. Um, we'll kind of go down the line and um, we'll start with uh, I'll jump around this time. Mr. Dennington.
Um, you know, I'm I'm very open to that. I know that my own uh, place of work, mainly because it's in Suffolk County, which was covered by the CDC guidelines. Uh, we went back to um, the firm adopted a, if you're working in your, you know, office. Um, you don't need to wear a mask if you're just by yourself, but when you're walking around the hallways, the building reinstituted mandatory mask around uh, the common areas of the building, so you kind of get used to it again. There's one thing I thought about is um. What, if anything, does this mean for uh, the town meeting? I mean, is the the plan is that the town meeting would be in uh, the trawdier um, auditorium again, right? Um. I I guess is our, is our thinking on that? It's just that it's too soon to tell and that um, we hope we'll be in a position where um, people will not need to wear masks at the meeting or we just don't know. I don't know, have you given me thought to that?
So, you know, again, Andrew, I don't know where we're going to be, and I think that's something we're going to have to look at as we go further down the road. I mean, I'm I'm hoping that again, against hope that this isn't going to become mandatory, you know, within the state again. Um, you know, my my goal is just right now, for at least a month of September or two. And again, we can reevaluate town meeting at any time, you know, on on what I what I thought processes on that. Um. And I don't know. I mean, the Board of Health at this point, they're they're outdoors, you know, summer nights is still going to happen. You know, it's it's just because we're inside that that's the concern. And again, because mask mandates are going into place in in um, some places and and people aren't getting as sick as well. I'm hoping that the numbers aren't going to continue to increase. Hopefully that, you know, we can do something to to help, believe that to some level. Oh, I'm muted. Sorry. Thank you, Chelsea. Um, so again, I don't know if that answered your question, Andrew, but um, you know, I think the, my intent is still to to move forward with a November first in-person town meeting until we're told differently. So, Chelsea.
Um, I'm supportive of of that. I mean, I think you know, probably the foot traffic may have decreased, given that our numbers are higher than they were um, a year ago. Um, and I, you know, I certainly don't want to put, I don't want to go further than what the state's doing. So I do think it makes sense for employees, if they're sitting by themselves, to not have to have it on. It's just really if they're, you know, going past somebody else. Um, and I, you know, I think it would provide a level of security for our employees who are public facing. So um, I'm supportive of um, what you suggested.
Thank you. And I'll just add too, that the Clerk's Office is already doing this. They're they're, uh, the Clerk's Office has mandated masks even when you're at your desk. So we're not taking it quite that far. So, Mr. Healy.
Um, yeah, I'm not going to proselytize about this, but but I'm 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 a no on this. Um, I think Governor Baker is right, then the stance he's taken and the stance that state has taken, which is um, you know, encouraging people, if you want to feel comfortable wearing a mask, is important. Um, and um, if folks are elderly, um, immunocompromised um, or have um, uh, uh, folks who are particularly sensitive at home, that it's important for them to have masks on. But I took, you know, e- even before I came over tonight, I took another look at the the statistics and uh, uh, on a number of different levels. Not only is Massachusetts one of the most highly vaccinated states, I think we're like four and a half million. Southborough is it, is it, I think it's seventy percent vaccination of the folks who can be um, vaccinated. And our numbers are consistent with what the um, efficacy of the va- of the vaccines was said to be at the outset, which is in the low nineties to mid-nineties efficiency. I mean, people are going to get COVID. We don't have a hundred percent vaccines. Um, the folks who do get COVID are getting it in very um, if they're vaccinated, they're they're getting it in very um, um, light ways. I think it's, and I think the number of, I think the percentage of vaccinated people who are getting um, who have tested positive for COVID, COVID is point zero one percent. Um, and I I I just think the other side of a mask mandate is, is it's it's a, it's people's liberty. And you're telling them what they can and can't do. And I just think that there has to be a really, really compelling case for doing that, and I'm not there. So I I I understand other people's positions. I wish they were otherwise. Um, maybe my little mini proselytizing changes people's minds, um, but I'm a I'm a no on on mandating masks.
Okay. Thank you, Marty. Sam?
I am a mild no with Marty. I have strong feelings in both ways on this thing, and I think that uh, you you're watching wait a little longer before we go to that point, I think, so.
Okay, that being said, um, I guess um, I'll make the motion and we'll see where it goes. Uh, and if anybody's minds change, that's fine. Again, this was the, the point of this was was for a discussion. And um, so um, that being said, do we have, I make a motion to uh, mandate masks for town buildings for the public coming in uh, for employees, if you're at your desk and you're outside of the inside of the allowed six feet space with no one around you, uh, you can remain unmasked, but if you go in common areas, that um, you would require a mask. So I'll throw it out there. We'll see where it goes. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
I don't know, Chelsea, did you say something?
Uh, I think I just, did you hear me?
Sorry, Andrew, did you second?
I seconded, yes.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, um, roll call vote. Uh, we'll start with Dennington.
Aye.
Malinowski.
Aye.
Healy.
No.
Mr. Stivers.
No.
And Ms. Brascio, aye. So three to two. All right, so Mr. Purple, we could put that in place. Um, that would be appreciated. Um. So I I guess, yes, it would include, um, I guess, let me, I don't know, like, make a new motion?
Yeah, I don't think it was.
Okay, so let me, let me amend the motion that was made to include Zoom meetings, um, where, um. Yeah, to include Zoom meetings as well.
So you would, so you mean Zoom meetings after a certain time because people have already posted, right?
So, so. All public meetings um, starting next Monday, because there's posted meetings through this week. Uh, next Monday through at least September twenty-second, and then we can relook at this on the twenty-second and see what we've got. So.
Just for, just for clarification, our next meeting, our September tw- it's twenty-first, not twenty-second. Right?
Okay, twenty-first, I had it down. Sorry. Uh, yeah, I had it, for some reason, I thought it was twenty-second, but okay, through the twenty-first, yes. So with that amendment, I guess we get to vote again. So, uh, Mr. Dennington.
Sorry, so.
Tell you what.
Again. We're adding some piece and now we're really voting on two things, the indoor mask requirement and also moving towards Zoom Zoom meetings. And there's a thinking that you really can't practically have a Okay, so has it, did you make the motion or you're looking for a second or? I'm a bit confused where we are procedurally.
Sorry, I apologize for the confusion. It's it's getting late and. So the the motion was made, I guess I'll do a separate motion just to keep it clear, that um, we require, we ask our boards and committees to uh, go back to Zoom meetings through September twenty-first, where the board will reevaluate this position.
You're asking what?
I'm requiring. So is is there a second?
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Dannington?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
I'm, I'm going to participate by Zoom anyway. I'm in a weird place here. But I'd rather be intellectually consistent than logically consistent, so I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Stivers?
No.
All right, there we go, three to two. So, um, now Marty, you don't have to fill out a remote participation form either, so you are, you are good to go. So. Um, okay, that being said, uh, the board is going, oh, public comment. Sorry, Mr. Lit. Wait, 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 I'm sorry. Hold on. Sorry, sorry, sorry. All right, I'm looking at one second, Mr. Lit. All right, uh, process to fill Board of Health, they can see. So I had a conversation with, um, the, the chair, Mary Lou. Oh, hold on.
I'm going to recuse on this one.
So. All right, so I, I had a conversation with, with Mary Lou, um, from the Board of Health, and, um, they advertised the Board of Health position for, um, I think it was two weeks, I believe. Uh, they had one applicant and the, the balance of the processes for the Board of Selectmen to have a joint meeting with, uh, Board of Health and to take a vote on that. I expressed to her that I had concerns, um, about it being posted. We kind of went through this with the noise by law in, in the middle of summer. Um, and, um, that I had asked if there was a way to extend the, um, application period to September 3rd. People would be home, school start the 1st, and then at our meeting on the 8th, we could do the joint meeting. Um, Ms. Woodford would, um, she was hoping to have it done and to be able to participate in that discussion on the 30th. Um, again, I expressed my reservations, but I told her I would certainly bring it to the board, and I'm, I'm open to, you know, the will of the board. I mean, they have one applicant that stepped forward. Um, again, that was just, my, my concern was strictly on the, on the process, on doing it two weeks in the middle of August, especially when we know people are gone. So I will open it up to the board and happy to do whatever the board would like to do. If we do do it before July 30th, we'd have to schedule, um, another meeting, August 30th. Sorry, August 30th. I know, you'd have to schedule another meeting, so to keep that in as well. So we'll just kind of go down the line. Mr. Healy, I don't know what your thought?
Do we, um, again, I'm fine with one, one applicant, if that applicant is terrific.
They are.
Which is true.
They're out.
Oh.
There's no question about that.
Then, then it was, it was, it was, it was posted, we got a terrific ac- applicant in response, I'm comfortable with the process.
I think it's important to keep this moving quickly, and I think the applicant is an excellent one, and I don't see why we wait.
Okay, Mr. Dannington?
So are you, you're, you want to have a meeting on the 30th to consider this?
It, it would have to be, Andrew, before the 30th, um, her, she has submitted her resignation for the 30th. So, um, yeah, would have to be, we'd have to set a meeting, and again, I can coordinate with her and we can do that via email. That's, we don't have to set anything tonight to find out everybody's availability, if, if that's the path that the board chooses to go. I just wanted to express the concern because I know the issue's going to come up. It came up during noise, and I just wanted to make sure that it was out there. We would, we did.
That would be the only item on the meeting? Just one, just that one item?
Step up and take the shot at getting elected next time, so.
Okay, Andrew, your thoughts?
I, I haven't, I just asked if, if the meeting, if we had the meeting on the 30th, this would be the only item on? Okay, then I, I, I.
Interview of the candidate, because that's, that's the pro.
Okay.
Sorry, it would be an interview of the candidate and then the, um, the board and the Board of Health would vote.
And we could do all that via Zoom. We chose, right, so.
Andrew, so, so Sam said that it would be via Zoom, and I, I acknowledge we could certainly do it via Zoom, it'd be more convenient, um, for, and every, for everybody anyway, seeing as we set the next week anyway, so it would be a Zoom meeting.
I can do that.
Okay, so I will reach out to the Board of Health, find out some dates, we'll shoot some dates out to everybody, and, um, we'll do it before.
I'll be in South Dakota. I may be able to participate.
Appropriately in the badlands.
When are you meeting, Marty?
Uh, um, the 26th.
Okay, so maybe we'll do it the 25th.
Oh.
So there you go. Um, okay, so that's fine. So now, Mr. Lit, public comment. Good evening, Mr. Lit. Could we have your name and your address, please?
Muted.
All right, hold on for a second. Um, so Tim Lit, Woodland Road. Uh, I know it's late, but I didn't want to disappoint Mr. Healy. Um, so a couple of things. The first is on the discussion you had about regionalizing communications. Um, it seems to me that there's more than one way to regionalize, and certainly building a mega complex with everything in one place certainly builds an empire. Um, and it has some advantages in terms of consolidation, but there are other alternatives. So there's no reason, for example, that you couldn't have a distributed organization that used our existing communications facilities, those of other towns, and you managed it in a distributed fashion. I mean, technology is there to do it. It might be cheaper than putting up a, a building, and it might also solve the issues of the other duties that communications people currently serve. So I would hope that people don't restrict themselves to the state's idea of, you know, one bomb-proof shelter, one egg, one basket. Um, second thing is, um, yes, Mr. Healy, um, the current sidewalk goes all the way down to across from the Public Safety Building. Yes, it's important for, um, everyone to be able to access the $26 million building that we built without a sidewalk, and I'm going to keep reminding you of this until I'm blue in the face or you actually do something about it.
We don't respond to public comments, so I'm not going to say anything.
I'm not asking you to say anything, I'm just telling you.
But you are preaching to the choir.
I, I, I do understand that there are some people who are in the choir, and there are some people who don't seem to be. Um, and my third item has been rendered mute, moot by one of your votes, so have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lit. All right, at this time, the board is going to enter, will be entering into executive session for MGO. Chapter 38, Section 21, and not returning to open session to discuss contract negotiations with the Town Administrator. Exemption two, as the chair has determined, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Roll call vote.
So is, is the motion to go into executive session and then adjourn?
Yes.
All right, second.
Okay, Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Dannington?
Aye.
Andrew, can you say it one more time?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Ms. Brascio, aye. Thank you, the board.
She is aye. You skipped me.
I'm done.
Take it first of all.
Okay, thank you, the board's in executive.